Thank you. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's five minutes after 2:00 P.M. And this committee shall reconvene the public hearing on Bill Number 316-32 introduced by Vice Speaker Benjamin J. F. Cruz. It's an act to repeal and reenact Section 3105, Chapter 3 of Title 22 of the GCA relative to responsibly raising the minimum wage. And as you all know, this is a continuance of a hearing that we announced in accordance with the open government law, five days in advance on April 15, 2014. And then a second notice was again sent on April 18, 2014, for the same public hearing. And so I do have a sign-up sheet. Let me first recognize and thank the Vice Chair of this committee for being here, Senator Tom Ado. And then to his right is Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. Joining us is Senator Morrison. Thank you. Senator Tony Ado, Senator Brent McCready, Senator Chris DeWingis, and Senator and Dr. Elia Maschira. Thank you for being here. We have a sign-up sheet, and first on the list to testify-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Senator Israel.
May I please, should we request to the members-
Can you-
That the man up here be given priority to speak first, either our control or ladder room to carry it?
I was-
The young bucks can hold off.
Yeah.
But he did nothing yet.
Yeah, yeah. And I- and this committee will make the unilateral decision to allow for that accommodation. Who dare oppose the request like that? I think that's, yeah. So Senator Israel, please step forward. Please, yeah. The upside to that request is you-
Sixty-five?
Yeah. Well-
You have to be enrolled at UOG.
Okay, I think also we're making this accommodation in deference to you also as a former member of the legislature. An institution that you're very highly proud of and you regard, right? And Mr. Armando Dominguez, thank you. No, 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 none of that. So who would like to- up the two of you, who would- Okay, okay. So we'll begin the hearing, and certainly we'll begin with you, Mr. Dominguez, please.
Can you turn on your mic?
Is your mic on?
Turn on your microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Israel, and to you all, good gentlemen and senators, for this opportunity, and to everybody, to you and to the people at my back, a good happy day. You know, this question is a really a tough question of to be or not to be on the salary increase. I'm not representing any association, except for myself, because I was compelled with my civic duty to voice my opinion, since sometimes this letter, if you are not influential, it will not be published in the newspaper. They will just cut you short. And besides, sometimes presenting things in the newspaper is not enough. Well, I came here as an ordinary citizen. My name is Armando Dominguez. I live in Assam. I am seventy-seven years old, but although people mostly do not believe that I am, I was plowed when they said I'm only fifty-five. Well, anyway, to begin with, this proposal of wage increase seems to sound good. You know, wage increase, increase. But I have an experience, based on my experience, when the increase was promulgated several years ago, I asked the people in a hotel, which I was working also as a minimum wage earner, what is the effect. Although to us, it has no effect, because the same thing that I was receiving was not increased. But to them, their benefit were cut short. Instead of working now for five years to have some benefit, they have to work ten years. And then their overtime, and to my regret, some of them were dismissed. I don't want to mention the name of the hotel. So based on that, I will base it also on my own experience. In nineteen sixty- in nineteen seventy, I came to Guam. The minimum wage was only one-eighty for construction worker. Of course, I was given that and then some deliberation, so I do not pay it. But mind you, when I bought grocery at that time, on the same amount, when the wage increase was promulgated to go standard with U.S. mainland, the grocery bag that I used to use on the old pallets won't be filled up on the same amount. But okay, we have an increase, but then I could not make a saving, because I'm spending it on other thing that will greatly increase. So this increase is some benefit. It will have an economic and sympathetic adjustment, what they call, you know, sympathetic relationship. Once you increase the salary, you will complain, "I am already receiving with my, and Armando is now making this much," so there is no comparity. So eventually, you will increase your salary. Everybody will increase. So let me read it, so I will be more specific. When I come to Guam forty years ago, wage was one-eighty. And then everything increased. The house that were to be built, which I built my house on less than twenty thousand, was estimated now for twenty-six to thirty thousand. And to tell you as an experience, when I added a room, a toilet, as an outside toilet, it cost me one-third of what it cost me before when I built my two-bedroom house with a living room and a garage. See, it cost me seven thousand. Can you imagine? It's almost one-third. Okay. So certainly, when I minimum wage increase, everything is great. Without any approval from the government, this bus company increased. So the tourists complained more, you know, takai takai, which means expensive, you know, because they increased from two dollars to three dollars to four dollars, because they increased the salary of the bus driver, which I was one. So actually, nothing lost on the company, but the people, the tourists, feel it because, "Oh, I did only need euro." But then, no, change it, already changed, okay. Now, where I- back to my country where I came from. Where I came from before, there were no minimum wage. The American company exercised their, you know, their economic thing, because they're making money. They make their worker pay good, like in American standard, because they have some monopoly. So the Chinese businessman and the Filipino businessman complained that this is another Westernization or colonialism mentality, that they have to increase the salary. At that time, workers work in a tendan nani, they get sometimes, you know, what they can afford, anything like that. But then, when the salary was increased, this tendan nani, some of them closed, because they cannot afford the minimum wage imposed by the government. And I was working then also at the government. Our salary increased, but then the jeepney that I was riding, from ten cent to twenty-five cent. Remember at that time, ten cent, the taxi is only fifteen cent, twenty-five cent? So everything increased. Our salary in the government increased, and also, but the salary of those who are, like I told you, the American government, or the American companies, the Philam Life, the Yos Life, all those U.S. Guarantee, all those people working in the private sector, they don't want to work in the government, because the government pay is so low. But there was some leniency, because I could go to college. So I went to college at that time, working in the government. The job is not too taxing, so I was able to finish my bachelor's degree. Now, that is it. Increasing all the salary. Now, if I am not for the increase of the salary, what then I am for? What are the solution? Okay, there are so many solutions, but I will only mention few. Because this economic increase, this salary increase, is a really, what they call an illusion, illusion, if not totally applied, a complete vanity, you know? So let- what is then the solution? My first solution is, first, the government should exercise austerity in the government, as well as the private sector, you know? The rightful austerity, not to tell, to hold your, you know, your force too tight. There are times that you have to study, we have a lot of PhDs, they can study what is good for the economy. You see, stop paying off island consultants. I thought Guam can do it by themselves, because you have so many PhDs and educated people, and it has been proven, you know? Our one sector of the department of the government is running good by a local person. So why do I have to pay and believe on these studies, studies that putting out down to the grain? Paying up them, and then they're holding our neck. We can do it ourselves. I know you can do it yourself. Okay. Fix all roads that fixing min- my system to avoid flat tire, you know? Four years ago, before I campaigned, before I ran, the same shit, excuse me, the same road, the same bumpy road, that's why my wife and I sometimes have to have argue, "Why do you have to evade? Why do you have to hit those bams?" I cannot help it. See? And he doesn't want to damage her car, because me, as a taxi driver, just go straight, boom, boom, whatever. But this is not good if you fix the road, because the tired people will not have much, you know, there will be no more accident, less accident. So there are some sector that will be affected. Now, so by the minimum increase, because of fixing tire, will cost fifteen-dollar guarantee, it will cost twenty dollars. I can assure you, even the milk that I am buying will become now seven dollars or eight dollars. You know, before, it was only one-twenty-five. I was driving at foremost, you know? Milk and things are like that, are just that amount. But when all this increase, of course, foremost at that time, we're already giving more minimum wage, above minimum wage. Where the minimum wage was only four-twenty-five, we're already making, and plus the overtime, that's where the crux of the matter. When you increase the minimum wage, follows the overtime rate, you know? That's why now people are happy, because the overtime rate doubled, because the minimum wage increased. Okay. Consumer Bureau and other watchdog should watch prices, as well as income of big companies, whether these big companies are sharing their income. You know, I was once an employer before. I never paid my workers minimum wage. It's depend on what I profit. And not- people know that at the port, and they thought I retired from the port. No, I just doing business of the port. But I never paid my workers minimum wage. I paid them based on what I earned or what I profit. You know, but top things are going now at the port, because of so many restrictions. Those are the, you know, the way, that's why some businesses are leaving up, because of the unnecessary restrictions, who impose for check of security. Do you know now that I have to pay two-hundred-and-fifty to enter the port, for the tick transportation worker identification card? Now, we can only- they said the security system of the government is not good, so they have to do their own security. Shit, we all know every- excuse me again. They all know everybody here. You know who am I, I know you who- you know, the nice thing in Guam, we know everybody, we're like brother and sister. But then, when they treated us in anything, you know? When I was in the Philippines, I entered Sali Point, you know, with minimal security, and I am a foreigner in that land, because that belonged to government. Here we are, all citizens, with all the driver license and identification, they will not accept that, also for security reason. Again, excuse me, my poor letter word sometimes, you know, it's like my bad habit, which I try to put it out, especially when our adrenaline is rising up, you know? Well, abolish GRT. Fix it with sales tax. This will help the government for paperwork and documentary things. You know, the GRT put it on the sales tax, so the people in the business are the one that will be bothered to put up the paperwork, and you, the government will save on paperwork and documentary thing. And also, do not tax the second job of a lowly employee. If I have a second job, minimum wage, on the first job, you can tax it. But please, can you exchange the order where I work hard, because I work beyond hours just to make more money, to support my family? Of course, now I'm happy, because me only on my wife, and plus my minimum social security, and then I was able to save. So I don't bother it. In fact, this minimum wage will not concern me, because probably in a few years, like Mr. Israel, we will be gone, whether we like it or not, but probably we will have twenty-five more years to live. So eliminate income tax. Remember, income tax is not in our constitution. It was amended by the U.S. Congress for greed, because they want to raise their salary. It was never amended. The thirteen colonies never ratified it. But then the Congress, because they want money, they put it out. So actually, the income tax is illegal. It was not put by the history, our forefathers, the draft of the Constitution, because they rebelled again, British, for taxation. So when they wrote the Constitution, they did not put income tax. We don't have income tax until the sixteen amendment, you know, by the thirteen colonies. But I told you, it was not ratified. You know, so it is illegal until now. But what Che Pannery said, "A thing that is wrong, and it continue to be done, it look like an appearance of right." And anyone who will correct it, you know, will be the one who will appear wrong. That was Henry Do during the revolution of this, against our British colonizer. So, you see, gentlemen, I'm about to conclude, because there are so many things that you can do. It sounds good, but then, I will not. If they- stop borrowing money that our generation cannot pay, or pay, or this generation. Borrow money that this generation can pay, but not the next generation, you know? If government have surplus, then help the low-earning people by subsidizing food. Of course, we have the food stand, or ask the U.S. government to have more. If they can pull more money to Afghanistan and to other part of the world, why not Guam? Why can we not represent Guam very good, so that we can ask more, some help, in terms of money and other economic necessities, or other improvement? After all, they are using us, you know? It is not fair for them to ask, to ask them good, at least for our company. Remember Alaska, they're giving, they have no income tax, I think, they're giving them one-thousand a month for Arab individual. That's why one worker here is stayed there now, but they joined the family, and making more, receiving more money than what he was receiving when he were working here at the legislature. Okay. The minimum wage is likened to the apple eaten by Eve. It sounds good, but then what happened? We are now here. See? An apple is simply that it sounds good. But then, after Eve, that is, I liken the minimum wage law. It sounds good, but it will have an eternal, you know, precaution. Of course, the only one that will be benefited here is the bank. The bank, because all the money that you receive, we receive, I receive, these people receive, will go to the bank. The bank will grow and grow, until the kingdom ends, as provided, and thing, by the porcupine and porpoise. Thank you very much, and have a nice day. I hope you will have a nice day. And thank you for this opportunity again, and for Mr. Israel to answer, because I have things to do, because I want to have a living and catch up that, whatever thing that they call me. Good thing they did not call me and run away. Okay? Have a nice day, gentlemen, and thank you for this opportunity. Happy day, Guam.
Thank you. Can we just be sure we have a copy of your testimony for the committee report?
Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation, your participation.
And I hope I can publish this in the newspaper, but like I told you, I have to sit down and do something. And thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Israel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be very brief, and if anyone believes that, I've got a Spanish bridge I can sell. Giving me a microphone is like giving the Taliban a weapon of mass destruction. Anyway, we have two laws, the laws of politics and the laws of economics. This bill is the laws of politics, and if my prediction is right, it will pass. It's no big thing. It's a- it's been presented and packaged in a beautiful manner, that will be hard for people not to swallow it and not to pass. But unfortunately, the true facts were not being put out. I already gave a copy of my testimony to the committee. So let me digress and talk off the cuff. What is not being told the public is that here it is, we're giving you a two-point-eighty-five cent increase. And people are focusing on that. A two-point-eighty-five cent increase per hour, that's a fortune, that's a lot of money. But what no one is telling them is the fact that government of Guam is going to come and take one-third of it as taxes. Between the tolling tax and FICA, and a few other taxes, the net into the pocket of this, of the wage earner, will not be two-point-eighty-five cents an hour, but a dollar-ninety-two cents an hour, after he pays off the taxes. That's what he will have to spend. The businessman, however, he'll incur a cost, an additional cost of two-point-eighty-five cents. And when you add an increase in the grocery receipts tax of four percent, his net cost that will, he has to go up and recoup and get back, will be two dollars and ninety-six cents per hour. So here you have the businessman being forced to increase their rates to two dollars and ninety-six cents per hour, while the poor slub, schmuck, will only get a dollar-ninety-two an hour. There's where the misconception arises. But if they cannot see that, in the words of Archie Bunker, "A dingbat's sleep on it." It will pass. But what's more important is this minimum wage increase is just a tiny part of what ails Guam. It's the tip of the iceberg. It's a small thing. It's like a pimple in your rear end. Irritating, but not so bad. Let's look at the entire speck room. Let's look at the entire iceberg, the entire ninety percent that's under the water and cannot be seen. My friend here mentioned it in passing, and that's the expenditure of government of Guam. In my business, I have to add an extra twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent of my cost is for the purpose of placating the numerous unnecessary, illogical policies and regulations of Gov Guam. That's a lot of money. It doesn't go into any bricks, or hollow blocks, or cement, or wood. It's just paperwork and time machine, and we have the records for that. And if I don't add an extra twenty-five percent, I'm dead, and that's what happened to most people. And it's twenty-five percent for nothing. Conflicting regulations. Complete autonomy by the line agencies, and not to mention the autonomous agencies. But it's- that is your major problem in Guam, in our government. And unless there's a real interest in overhauling the government of Guam, this minimum wage increase is just another drop in the bucket. To give you an example, people will say, "Our prices will go up." Not necessarily. My rentals right now, for a one-bedroom, is four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month, air-conditioned furnished. For a two-bedroom, it's five-hundred dollars a month, furnished air-conditioned. For a three-bedroom, it's eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, furnished air-conditioned. When my costs go up, I cannot arbitrarily increase my rent, because they can pay it, and they will not pay it. We have a surplus of rental units on the island. So the price of our- the selling price of any product is not based on cost, but it's based on cost and demand and supply. It's demand and supply in particular that determines what your selling price is. Not your actual cost. You will always like to sell for more than your cost, but sometimes you don't. And as a result, you can see all the empty stores up and down Marine Drive. I'm not just taking- I'm talking reality. Just drive up and down Marine Drive, and look at all the empty buildings. And yet, our autonomous agencies are spending thirty to thirty-five million dollars for a white elephant way out into the boonies, when they could have easily bought one of these empty buildings at a lesser cost. But they wanted their white elephant. And GPA is not the only one. Everyone is doing, GWA, right down the line. So, gentlemen, the real, the real cost to the island consumers and the island voters is not this minimum wage increase, but rather the operation, the excessive operation of Gov Guam. Look at Guam Memorial Hospital. For that matter, look at any of the operations of Gov Guam. They're constantly increasing rates without any regard to the consumer, that this rates will be passed on to the consumer. Just this morning, I, I took a building permit to build a football field, athletic field for Notre Dame in Jonia. Every agency has their own fee. That's another cost. GPA charged me a hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and forty cents for them to stamp yes. For nothing, it's way up in the hills. We're just leveling a field. Public Works will charge me a fee, I don't know what that is yet. So all these costs add up, a little here, a little there. Let's have a complete overhaul, and hopefully, it can be started by this legislature. A complete overhaul of the entire structure of government. If we don't, we'll be no different than any of the other bankrupt states throughout the world. And we will go bankrupt. As Margaret Thatcher, the Prime Minister of England, said, "Socialism will increase and prosper until we ran out of somebody else's money." Thank you, gentlemen, for giving me this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you also, Mr. Israel. Any questions or comments from? Okay, thank you for your participation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting us go.
Of course, thank you.
And I displease you. He mis- he mis- yeah, he misled me. I thought he was older than I am.
That's why you let him go first.
He's a young work- he's a young spurt.
I mean, right, the one I supplied, didn't mention it, but good thing you mentioned it. Thank you, Mr. Mr.
Senator Sanchez, were you going to provide testimony? Okay. Just wanted to recognize and acknowledge you also, Senator, yeah. Okay, on the sign-up sheet is Mr. Mark Baldega, and please, and Mr. Carl Pangolin, and Mima Iwana, yeah?
Don't close it.
Okay, okay, Mark will begin with you.
Thank you, Hafedeh Chairman Respecho, and committee members. My name is Mark Baldega. I'm testifying today as both the chairman of the Guam Visitors Bureau, and as an employer and businessman in the Guam tourism industry since 1987. Where I'm speaking from only one of those positions, I'll make that point very clear. But for the most part, my position on Bill 316 is the same in both of these roles, and for the record, we are opposed to Bill 316. The Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors has passed a resolution to that effect, and Mr. Pangolin will speak to that. As both a businessman and as the chair of GVB, I sincerely appreciate the spirit and the intention of Bill 316, that seeks to raise the minimum wage on Guam, and seeks to improve living conditions for our lowest wage earners. Each of us who live in our small island community share many common goals, to grow our economy, to provide greater opportunities for our citizens, and to improve the social condition of those less fortunate. In fact, it's this spirit of goodwill that makes me want to live and continue to live in Guam, the island I've made my home for twenty-five years. However, both as a businessman and as the chairman of GVB, I must oppose Bill 316, because despite its good intentions, this bill will cause layoffs of minimum wage earners, and will directly harm the very people it is intending to help. And as the GVB general manager will explain, seventy-eight percent of the GVB members who were surveyed said that they will have to freeze the wages of all of the other employees in order to pay for this. So Bill 316, I call it an equal-opportunity destructor, wreaking havoc on businesses, minimum wage earners, and all Guamanian men and women who have worked so hard to earn their way to ten, or fifteen, or twenty dollars per hour, and to our tourism economy. The industry is just now struggling to its feet after two decades of being hammered. Together, we have endured super typhoons, an eight-point-one earthquake, the impacts of the Persian Gulf War and the Iraq War, SARS, nine-eleven, a Korean Airline- Gulf War and the Iraq War, SARS, 9/11, a Korean airline crash, the devaluation of the yen in the yuan, and the Asian economic downturn, the unfortunate 212 incident in Tumon, and more recently, the March 11 triple disaster in Japan. Senator Pangolinen, in the paper today wisely stated that the time to look at raising wages is during an economic expansion, who are just now starting to get on our feet. And furthermore, not one of the disasters I mentioned will do anywhere near as much sustained damage as this bill would do. But rather than speaking in the abstract, I'll use my own companies as an example, and I'll speak now as a businessman and not as the Chairman of GVB. I founded the Sandcastle, as most of you know, in 1987. In the last few years alone, we've expanded our business to include Lenatla Cultural Park, the Beach Bar and Grill, the Chamorro Beach Barbecue and Show, Big Sunset Dinner Cruise, the Magic of Guam Show at the Reef Hotel, the Visitors Channel, Big Media, Big Services, and our newest attraction, Ride the Ducks. We've been busy, expanding and reinvesting in Guam. Nine businesses in three years. In fact, in just those three short years, we've grown from 100 employees to 300 employees. These are labor-intensive companies with low profit margins, and I can tell you clearly if the minimum wage were what you propose, I could not have started those companies, and not one of those 200 new jobs would be created today. Many of the jobs in these startup companies are entry-level, they're startups. The vast majority of our employees earn far more than 10, 10 an hour. But out of 300 employees, we have about 125 entry-level employees, most of which are in these new companies. They include students, retirees, young people, and others. And like most tourism businesses, our team includes both highly-paid skilled workers and entry-level unskilled team members, such as dishwashers, cleaners, groundskeeping staff, and young people, such as those who work as villagers in our cultural park. They are productive, they're very happy to work, and we're very happy and very proud to have them and to train them. For many of them, it's their first job. My company also employs dozens of servers and bartenders who earn minimum wage, but they also earn tips. In our bar businesses, their tips often exceed $100 per night, and better performers average $200 per night, or in other words, $30 to $40 per hour in tips alone. As Bill 316 is proposed, their base wage would also go up 39%. In addition, other operating costs will also jump up, such as for contracted services like LMS landscaping or G4S security. Our average length of service in the kitchen at Sandcastle is 19 years. That's the average of the ladies that work in the kitchen. We're proud of our employees, and we treat them like family. You don't have employees work for you for 19 years if you're not treating them well. All of our employees, including those at minimum wage, receive good benefits, including medical and healthcare. Healthcare alone costs us $500 per month per employee, or in other words, an average of $3 per hour for each employee, including minimum wage employees. The costs of operating a business is far more than most people realize. I saw former Senator and Bank of Guam President Lou Leon Guerrero testify last week. She and her family have been our bankers for over 20 years and will continue to be our bankers. They have stood by me through good times and bad. I met with her after she testified, though, and I tried to explain to her the impact to our company as a client of the bank and to tourism. And to be honest, I think she was rather shocked, or at least surprised. I suppose I can understand that. Lou is in the banking business, not the tourism business. And with all due respect to her and to other proponents, it's easy to advocate for a minimum wage increase when you only employ accountants or auditors or legal secretaries or don't employ anyone at all. It won't cost them a penny, but it will have a direct and significant impact on most tourism businesses, which represent one out of every three private sector employers on this island. Lou and I spoke a bit about economic theory, and we agreed that 100 economists will give you 100 different points of view about whether raising wages would help or damage an economy. But as I explained to her, for Bill 316, I'm really much less interested about philosophizing about macroeconomic impact and much more concerned about reality. Here's why. A full-time employee works 40 hours a week, or 2,080 hours per year. That's a little bit tight, but if you, can you see it okay? You're proposing 10, 10 an hour, so in other words, $21,000 per year per employee, up from $15,000. That difference is $5,928 per year before benefits. And this means that, whoop, I'm sorry. This means that a small business that's currently paying, for example, $60,000 a year, the bottom right corner there, for four employees, can now not even afford three employees. Just look at that. What you pay for four employees will now pay for 2.8 employees. In other words, gentlemen, a small business that employs 40 people can now only afford to pay 28 people. So what do you think is going to happen? What will they do? Let me use my own company as an example. I have 125 entry-level team members, so my cost will be 5,928 times 125, $741,000 per year, or 3/4 of a million dollars each and every year. And while I will have been happy to have been able to help a minority of my employees, here's the problem. After paying my expenses, my taxes, and my debt, that increase exceeds my net profit after tax in some recent years. Let me repeat that so it's clear. Your mandated increase will not only go to the lowest level of my employees, but will exceed my ability to pay for it and leave me nothing, not only for myself, but for all of my other hard-working team members that represent 75% of my workforce. It's the same as if someone mandated to reach into your pockets, empty your personal bank account each and every day, and no matter how hard you work, your savings would be taken out and given to a small group of people with nothing left for you or your family. Or in my case, nothing left, not only for me, but for any of our other team members that represent a vast majority of our workforce. Is that reasonable? Does that sound fair? So what exactly would you propose or suggest that I do? Some companies may, may raise rates, of course. Many companies will do that, and I wonder what impact that will have on retirees or others on fixed income. In my particular case, I can't raise prices, notwithstanding the fact that the price increases would wipe out the benefit of the wage increases, as most employees have their wages frozen. But my dinner show already costs $159 per person. So what price would you suggest that I sell it for? And so what are my choices? Cut costs. Okay? I can't cut my mortgage. I can't cut my GRT. How about power? Power is one of my largest costs. I've already installed energy-efficient LED lights in every fixture in my building, and I've cut my power consumption as far as it can possibly get. And yet, my power bill is still $60,000 a month at the Sandcastle, $60,000 a month. It used to be $25,000, now it's $60,000. Everyone keeps talking about how the cost of living has exceeded wages. I agree. But I can tell you that the cost of operating a business has increased far more. Employee wages, although never as high as any of us would like, have gone up far more than our prices have gone up. We sold that same dinner show, the $159 dinner show, in 1990 when we opened for $99, 20 years ago. Two and a half decades later, it's $159, 60% increase. But 24 years ago, the minimum wage was $3.35. The minimum wage has doubled during the same time period that my pricing has only been able to go up by 60%. In recent years, my prices have remained flat year after year after year, as Guam continues to struggle as a cheap destination, trying to compete on price alone in a competitive marketplace. And I can tell you, after two decades of very trying times, I've already cut every controllable expense to the bone. My single biggest expense, as it is for almost all businesses, is payroll. It represents almost half of most companies' costs, and my company is no exception. And yet, you would raise the cost for 1/3 of my employees not by 3% or 5% or 7%, but by 39%. So again, Senators, I ask, what should I do? There really is only one logical cost, one logical issue. There's only one thing I possibly can do, and that is unfortunately to eliminate the jobs of those who jumped 39%. This is not macroeconomic theory. It is a simple, incontestable fact, and I will sit with any of you one-on-one and go through my P and L and walk you through it. There is no choice. I must cut jobs. The wage increase that you would mandate will force me to fire the very same people you are trying to help. There is no debating this fact. You will make it harder for GCC students and recent graduates to find work. In the U.S., it is estimated that every 1% to 3% increase in the minimum wage costs $300,000, 300,000 teenager jobs. 1% to 3%, you're mandating 39%. The ancient Chamorro Village and the Culture Park has been operating in a loss since it opened. I've been funding the village from the beach bar operations, but I can't continue this forever. I've already reduced operating hours to afternoons alone. From 8 to 5, we're now open 1 to 5. We've cut everything we can cut except the staff. An empty village is sort of useless. Raising the cost of labor in the park, they're all entry-level in the park, would raise the cost of the park operations 39%. And I can tell you, it will be the final nail in the coffin. And Senators, I can assure you that the passage of this bill will be solely responsible for the closure of one of the few cultural attractions we have on this island and for taking away a dozen jobs from the young people who staff that village and who may live at home, but who use that money for food, clothing, gas, cellphone payments, and in some cases, college. Thinking about the closing of the park after the tremendous effort, pride, and hard work that went into it, that those young men invested, breaks my heart. This is not economic theory, this is reality. And make no mistake, I'm sorry to say, sirs, it will be your doing. You will make it harder for every single cultural practitioner on this island to find work right at the time that GVB is trying so hard to encourage the hotels to promote cultural tourism. How many hotels do you really think will be adding cultural practitioners as their cost of entry labor increases by 39% and they have to lay off staff? For my own operations, we will probably look at reducing the hours of cleaners and groundskeepers back-of-house areas, and I will have to accept that my properties won't be cleaned as often as they should be. But more importantly, I will struggle with how those hard-working men and women will pay the bills for themselves and their families as I have to reduce their hours. The quality of our operation will deteriorate, just as we are trying to raise the image of Guam. But reducing payroll in those departments won't be nearly enough. Your mandated increase actually exceeds the entire cost of payroll in those departments. My managers on salary will have to go to working six or perhaps six-and-a-half-day work weeks, very unfair for them and their families, but that also won't be enough to fund your $740,000 cost. So I will have to institute wage freezes for the other employees who aren't minimum wage earners, unfairly burdening them as well for your generosity with their money. Instead of staffing one waiter per 15 guests, we'll have to staff one waiter per 20 or 25 guests. Service will suffer, just at the time when we are just starting to rehire more people, just starting to get back on our feet, and just at the time when Guam needs to increase its service levels to grow the economy and to compete in the regional marketplace, to reach our goals and our potential as a destination. All along Hotel Road, our service will go down as our prices go up, I can guarantee you that. It is absolutely the most absurd way of thinking to imagine that raising the minimum wage, resulting in lower service and higher cost, would somehow help or grow our tourism-based economy. It's just silly. Speaking now is the Chairman of GVB. I'll try to be a little less passionate about it. I have some experience in tourism. I was a board member of the International Board of the Pacific Asia Travel Association, or PATA, for over a decade, and a trustee of the PATA Foundation. I've been fortunate to be granted every award GVB offers, from Mr. Tourism to Golden Latte and whatnot. I was an honorary ambassador-at-large for Governor Joe Outa in the 90s and granted the ancient order of the Chamorro, which I'm very proud of. I was also the Chairman of the Japan Marketing Committee and Vice Chairman of GVB, before having the honor of being the current Chairman of the Guam Visitors Bureau. I've traveled extensively to every country in the region and have been to all of our source markets numerous times, including perhaps 60 or 70 times to Japan. I've added, I've attended every major trade show in the region, including Jona dating back to 1988. I know a thing or two about tourism, gentlemen, and I can tell you that Bill 316 will damage our tourism economy. More recently, I led the team effort that resulted in a roadmap and a blueprint for driving Guam tourism and the Guam economy forward, Tourism 2020. Bill 316 will completely obliterate everything it seeks to accomplish. Tourism 2020 is a hard-charging, action-oriented plan that can make a difference and bring about tremendous economic growth for our island, raising the quality of life not only for minimum wage earners, but for each and every Guamanian. Implementing that plan is what we should be talking about here today. Improving employee wages and raising their quality of life will come from improving the quality of our tourism product and from investing in employee training to raise our service standards so that we can finally raise our image and our quality, and then our prices and our yields, so that businesses can afford to provide the wage increases that are so well-deserved for all of our employees on a sustainable basis. Mandate paid training for our employees, if you would like, so that they can gain the skills and earn the right to receive pay increases based on completion of training levels and merit. I'll happily sign up for that. That's part of the Tourism 2020 Plan. I know you're familiar with it since we sought your input, but if you haven't read the entire document, I would urge you to do so before voting on this legislation. It's about giving GVB the resources it needs to grow our markets and grow the economy, to expand into China with or without a visa waiver, to continue to develop Russia, a market where this year alone, by the way, we will exceed our Tourism 2020 plans for the year 2020. We just added three new cities, we're up to five from Russia alone. We projected 20,000 arrivals from Russia by 2020. We'll be well over that this year alone. It is about encouraging the development of needed hotel rooms and all the other things that are laid out in a very detailed strategic plan. In short, it is about building our economy one brick at a time, and that is what we should be talking about here today. We're just starting to get momentum, and I beg you not to rip it out from under our knees for some misguided economic theory. I'm going to tell you a really brief anecdote because it relates to this. When my two boys were young, someone told me that they should play basketball. I asked why. They said, so that they can be tall. I asked why they thought that playing basketball would make them tall, and they said, because basketball players are all tall. And they were serious. They got cause and effect backwards, and that is exactly the same thing that's going on here today. Raising minimum wage will not cause the economy to grow. Growing the economy will cause wages to grow. It's very common sense. To the proponents of this bill, including Vice Speaker BJ Cruz, the bill's author, I sincerely applaud and agree with your passionate concern for the 6,500 families living in poverty, of which almost 2,900 have female heads of household without a contributing male present. We must all rally together to help the underprivileged, but raising the minimum wage is not the way to do that. If you want to close the gap, subsidize utilities for Guam families living below the poverty level, since power and water bills make up a huge share of household expenses. The amount of their savings would be more than the difference between 725 and 1010. And the difference is that that such a subsidy, as an example, would be shared by all of the taxpayers, by you Senators, and by me, and by all of us in the community, and not just the employers in the tourism sector who employ unskilled labor and who are trying as hard as we can to stay in business and drive this economy. And by the way, I've been told, I don't know if it's true, that there is some room to do this without violating the bond covenants a little bit. Why not help those who really need help in a manner that is fair and balanced? Raising the minimum wage comes at the expense not only of business owners and of consumers who would pay in the form of higher prices, it comes at the expense of the loss of jobs for the very people you're proposing to help. It comes at the expense of the non-minimum wage earners as well, who won't get the wage increases they deserve because the companies can no longer afford to pay them after paying your 39% increase to the lowest workers. And most importantly, it will come at the expense of the entire tourism industry and our tourism economy. Sir, you are playing with fire with economic theory, and the potential consequences are extraordinary. And to top it all off, we're doing this in a vacuum without even taking the time to perform a proper economic impact assessment. With all due respect, passing this law without a proper public forum, not just here, an economic impact study would perhaps be the most irresponsible action I have ever seen in my life. If I accomplish nothing else in this testimony, I would ask that you please take the time to look at the economic impact and to perform a fair, neutral, and unbiased economic assessment. If you tell me that one has already been done, then I can tell you that no one bothered to ask a single question of GVB, the organization that represents 60% of the island's economy. A neutral study has not been done. We completely agree with the governor's position that a balance must be sought and that there must be fair consideration for any increases in operating costs. But if you really want to push wages this far, then the balance must be fair, and we need a reasonable dialogue on the true net impact and a study to assess the impact. I'm almost done. I believe that growing the economy will create demand for jobs. I believe that training our employees will create a desire for employers to pay more for those jobs and a desire for employees to excel. I believe that raising the quality of our island's tourism industry will allow us to finally raise prices. We sell beachfront rooms on U.S. soil in Asia for $75 per night. It's absolutely ridiculous. Raise quality and grow arrivals, jobs will follow. You cannot induce this demand by raising wages artificially for the lowest sector of the economy. The unintended consequences of Bill 316 are stunning. It will hurt existing jobs, it will kill the creation of new jobs, and damage tourism for years to come. It is not fair to businesses, it is not fair to our employees, and it is not fair to this island. If you don't believe me, with 25 years of experience in the industry and as the Chairman of the Visitors Bureau, then I ask that you please at least agree to conduct a study on the economic impact. There's absolutely no There's absolutely no rational justification whatsoever for not conducting a proper, full, fair, and comprehensive assessment and study for an industry that represents sixty percent of our own economy, and employs nearly 20,000 Guamanians. The header of this bill is "Raising the Wages Responsibly," or responsibly raising the wages. The responsible thing to do is to conduct a study. For the good of our island and its leading industry, I implore you, Senator Respecho, and your fellow committee members, to reconsider the social legislation, and to withdraw Bill 316, until we've had a proper public dialogue about alternatives and consequences, until we have completed a fair and proper assessment of the impact. Seju Smasi, I'm sorry, it was a little bit long, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Can you also make sure we have a copy of your testimony? Okay. Mr. Panglinen?
Hafadeh, good afternoon. Thank you very much, Chairman Respecho, ma'am, and the rest of the committee, thank you very much for having me. Present today, my name is Carl Panglinen, I am the general manager of the Guam Visitors Bureau. And today, in my testimony, I will furnish hard copies of the slideshow, brief slideshow that we'll present, which really just talks about the results of an informal poll that we established late last week, and some of the early responses that we have had back. Also indicate, also included in the testimony provided is just a copy of our press release that we sent out yesterday afternoon. And I want to start off just by paraphrasing some of that. And we understand that lawmakers want to help people, but forcing the free market to raise the minimum wage will have the reverse effect, leading to a decrease in jobs and hours, and an increase in prices. We recommend a full economic study that analyzes the ramifications this will have on our investor climate and on every single person on this island. Guam, from a tourism perspective, is already up against stiff competition, competing against destinations with much, much lower cost of doing business. Plus, with the devaluation of the yen, Guam has already become a more expensive destination for Japanese visitors, our primary market. In this current environment, it is not the time to raise costs, which will lead to higher prices and a decline in our visitor industry. The title of my presentation with the slideshow will be the Guam Visitors Bureau Membership Survey. GVB, although a public corporation, is also a member-based organization, and so we play an advocacy role for all of our members. We don't have the same nimbleness, because we are government entity, we don't have the same nimbleness as, say, the Guam Chamber of Commerce, who could have convened their board of directors, you know, in a flash, and make policy decisions. We have to follow open government laws, and that was the reason why, late last week, at our board meeting on Thursday, it took some time, but it was an official board meeting, and at that point is when our board of directors took the position against Bill 316, opposing Bill 316. It was a voted in favor, eight in favor and two opposed, of the ten board members that were present. And so, after that board meeting, the board of directors directed management to conduct a membership survey. And within this membership survey, we sent it out to over 300 member businesses, and we were very pleased, as of yesterday afternoon, to have 95 respondents, 95 respondents are about one-third of our membership base. And in summary, we polled over 300 of our members, based specifically on Bill 316. Of the 95 that responded, they represented over 11,000 employees hired within the industry. Eighty percent of those that responded said that they opposed the minimum wage hike. The survey also showed a decrease in jobs, hours, and benefits, and we'll get into a lot of those details a little bit later. And 77% stated that they are likely to eliminate wage increases for all other employees to make up for the cost of the wage hike. This is just a quick pie chart, showing that we had of the 95 respondents, 76 members, 76 members were opposed to Bill 316, and raising the minimum wage by thirty-nine percent over three years. This next slide here, we sort of batched the responses, the responses included yes and likely yes, no and likely no, there were four options. And just to read them, number, the question, the first question was, "Will you decrease employee hours?" And combined yes and likely yes, 68% of them said that they would decrease employee hours. The next question was, "Will you reduce your number of employees?" And almost 59% of them said, "Yes, we will reduce the number of our employees." Next question was, "Will you eliminate or slow down wage increases for other employees to make up for part of that cost?" And as I mentioned earlier, 77% said that they would. "Will you raise prices?" 78% said that they would have to raise prices. "Will you reduce benefits such as healthcare?" 65% said that they would reduce benefits such as healthcare. This, I think, of everything that we were able to get back, this was the most telling number. Out of the 11,000 jobs that the respondents represented, we asked the question, "If you had to reduce your number of employees, how many would you have to let go, should this minimum wage hike take effect?" 674 jobs, 674 jobs would be lost, and this is just based on that third of a sample that we received, that we received back. You know, we extrapolated that out and used ratios, and basically, we've been touting that the tourism industry represents anywhere from 18,000 to 20,000 jobs. If you ratio out the number of respondents that we had, we're showing that over 1,100 jobs would be lost, should this, if we apply these same ratios, should the minimum wage hike take effect. With that, we asked questions on service levels, and if you were to reduce your staffing, how likely would this impact your service levels? In a time when, as we mentioned before, we're up against very, very stiff competition with very, very low costs for employment, we're talking about 51% of our members that were surveyed said that they would have to reduce staffing, and it would very likely impact their service levels, with an additional 24% that said that it would likely impact their service levels. That's close, that's 75%. We wanted to talk about the ability to pass on these costs and increase your prices. And in doing so, we polled the members to ask just how price-sensitive their customers are, and 76% of our respondents said that their product or service is very price-sensitive to their customers. As I mentioned before, the 95 respondents represented over 11,000 current employees. And of that 11,000, we asked, "How many fell in that range?" How many fell in that range of, that earned $10.10 or less an hour? And close to 4,000 employees earned their wages within that range. So we're talking about a good broad scope of, and representation of employees within the number one, arguably the number one industry on island, which Chairman Baldiga mentioned, could represent 60% of our island's economy. We know for a fact that we do represent at least a third of each private sector job in the industry. And so, we're talking about a lot of economic impact, a ton of economic impact to our number one industry, and all we're asking is, "Why the mad rush to legislate this? Why don't we take a step back? Why don't we conduct a proper economic impact survey, and find out what the impact's going to be, not just for the tourism industry, but for the island as a whole?" Seju Smasi.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Ms. Iwana, Mimi, Mima, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, ma'am, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you. Hafadeh, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Mima Iwana, I'm from Ocean Jet Club. I have this business over 26 years. First and foremost, I am Japanese, so please forgive me my broken English, I will try my very best to speak English, but please ask me if you are not understanding, I will do my very best. Yesterday, my good friend, Mr. Baldiga, called me to testify, well, he asked me, "How are you doing, Mima?" I said, "I am upset, I'm pissed." He said, "Why?" "I can't sleep with this, thinking about this Bill 316." So, okay, anyway, he told me to just come over here, "I need you to show your emotion." Then I said, "Okay." That's my, that's my weapon, I'm, as a woman, emotion, full of emotion, and I'm not in a good mood, because I just filed my income tax. So it's all added on. But anyway, thank you very much for this opportunity. So I didn't have a time to prepare the wonderful testimony like to gentlemen already, but I'm going to talk as emotion, but I did a little bit of study. As Ocean Jet Club, we have evaluation system. Right here, it's already seven people due for the evaluation, waiting. It's done, by, signed by manager. Now they are coming to my office, one by one, talk about money, how much they're getting pay rates. Some people are not getting paid, some people are let go. That's, that is my rule. For six months, we will give them sort of a probation time, then we go yearly evaluation. This evaluation system, it's 41 items. The manager, division manager will check, the grade is from excellent to the poor point, just like a student, that report card. Forty-one items, plus 38 phrases of Japanese conversation. I think my staff, over 40-plus, my staff can speak much better Japanese, more than any of you guys. No offense, but we train that hard. Because of, we are living in industry of a tourism, we get pay to serve tourists. So this is the Japanese skill they have to master, not fool like a fool Japanese, but they have to be able to comprehend it. When customer question, they have to be answer. To me, this is earning. They're going to earn this point, leads to the money. I have no problem with that. I have a problem with just giving. I'm Japanese, I grown up in Japan, and I moved to Guam 1987. My parents never teach me, never give me anything. I have to work, I have to earn it. That's what I believe, I teach my two children, try to graduate in the college, but if this bill pass, what am I going to tell my children? How they going to justify? Okay, mom, high school drop-off, high school graduate, college with the master degree, doctor degree, entry level, the earning, is it going to be not much different? Is that fair? I wish I can say, "Let's shake hand, we all make the same earning." That will be, "Don't worry, be happy." That's my dream. But that's not the life how goes, I believe. Who work hard, who don't, there should be a differences. Earning incentive, yes, I want to go for it. I'm going to give incentive. If you show it to me, productivity, willingness to learn, admit the mistake, be able to say, "I'm sorry," you're good, I give you money. But rather than that, sitting and just giving, I have a big problem. I have a big problem, just giving. So in this evaluation system, I'm sorry, see, my emotion is already rising. Excuse me. With this evaluation, we were able to identify their strength and weakness. Not only that, we gave them, "Okay, Ms. Mima, this is your next step. I would love to see you in my office an year from now, let's see how much you have grow." We clarify that, we gave them a tool, so they can study, they can learn, and next time when they get evaluated, their skill, their score will be up. So most of the employee will come out from my room with some kind of pay rate. I don't hardly recall people lost a job on the first probation. We are welcome, all entry level. I have no offense to that. There's a one incident, we got an evaluation final, it's in my office, that person did a wonderful. So we mentioned, "Okay, you're going to get this much pay rate." That was female, so I'm going to say. She look downstairs, like so, then she say, "I appreciate that offer, but I have to decline." I say, "Why?" "Because I'm going to lose the food stamp." That is the mentality, lot of people on Guam, it's filiating it. Rather than earning, become a productive citizen, they are in a limbo. Because if you don't do so much, there's a security, there's a blanket is waiting to wrap you up. So I want to see, make up your mind, do you want to grow, or you want to just stay in the level? I have no offense for getting assistance from government. If I lose my arms, or if I lose my legs, cannot go to work, I may apply, but as long as my breath is there, I want to work. That's my principle. So anyway, I was shocked, this employee refused to get a pay rate, because she didn't want to lose the food stamp program. That was very shocking, as owner. Anyway, so going back again, most of the employee will get pay rates. Number one, they were so happy that they were acknowledged by boss. Lot of the people never be fully acknowledged by full last name. For example, like Mr. Mark Baldiga, never been acknowledged in their whole life. But when I say, "Mr. Mark Baldiga, job well done, you will get 37 cents pay rate." First of all, they're shaking, because they were never been called their full name by officially. So there's a joy, that acknowledgement. That joy will lead to confidence. That confidence will give a hope. That hope will connect it to the willing to learn more and more and more, to become productive, because that's testimony. If you work hard, if you be productive for Ocean Jet Club, we give you money. How simple is that? Simple. My evaluation starts with attendance, attendance, come to work on time, do not call in sick, don't say, "I have a doctor's appointment." You have a twice-a-week off, that is your doctor's appointment day. We don't take the doctor's appointment unless it's emergency. So, that's what the important, joy, confidence, hope, and will to learn. They love that, and they talk about it among each other. And now, how are you going to justify the, who's making over $10? They were never going to get pay rates, they were never going to get evaluation, for as long as I think, because all the money, the budget is already taken away, allocated to this minimum wage increase. My business, I would not have that room. Then, is that fair? People earn it from 7:25, now they're making $10. That was a long history of hard work, they're making $10. Now they're going to look at each other, entry level, working hard three years, learning, practice, same. How the morale at the workplace will be questioned. It's not fair. And first of all, and first and foremost, it's not fair, and it's not fair, they will not have a pay raise, twice, for a long time, because the budget will be disappear. Why? Entry level, I'm sorry, not why. Also, second, entry-level staff will lose the direction. They will not, they don't have to have a direction to go to. Because my company, Ocean Jet Club, will not going to give a pay rate, who people making $11, and now, they're not going to make a $15, because the budget is taking away. So the entry-level people, $10 an hour people, how they going to justify, where they going to look for the direction to move forward, to better themselves? We're all going to be same, holding hand to hand, we are making the same money, wala, wala, wala. Do not worry, be happy. That's not fair. I have a one employee, she's only 37 years old, two years ago, she lost her loving husband, heart attack, she have a very small child, she is qualified for food stamp, but she is fighting. No, I'm healthy, I'm going to work my butts off, and she's making over $10. I want to reward her, next time when she's due for this, but she is going to lose this chance. Single mother, two children, husband is passed away, she will never going to have this pay rate, because she's already making over 10. It's just so unfair. Also, lot of the employee can't even speak English, maybe it's myself too, but can't even comprehend the English. We are... We are welcome everybody, no offense, we train them. We have a hard time communicating what language you prefer. I get confused, so I put my foot down. This is the United States of America, we all gonna have to speak English, including myself. So my challenge is, I'm gonna practice my English. So my employees, they have to speak English. But unfortunately, the situation is not that clear. Lot of them, they don't speak English, they can't understand, but we train them. We have no problem training them. I had a little survey yesterday, I checked. You know, we are so close tied with Japan. Japanese minimum wage, six twenty-five to eight twenty-five right now, believe or not. Yes, it's publishing. Eight twenty-five is in Tokyo or Osaka, big city. It's various with all the prefecture. So let's say average is seven dollars. I know Senator, all of you went or visit Japan many, many times. The food is good, people are, I think it's very respectful, but service so wonderful. One of my business friend, once a year, they take a good five to ten staff to go to Japan to study, to show them what is a customer's service are. I am not bribing because I'm Japanese, it's just a fact. In Japan, they work so hard, they provide excellent customer service. The minimum wage is six twenty-five to eight twenty-five. Speak one language, which is Japanese. But they all start even learning English based on all the foreigner people coming in, they are practicing. That's just a survey. I'm almost ending, my emotion is gonna come down, please excuse. Okay, in this industry, customers demands are getting higher and higher. Also supplier, which is tour agent. They were never gonna reduce their demand, it's never gonna happen. Twenty-five years on my experience, never went down. They don't care, customer don't care, oh Guam got hit by typhoon, I'm sorry. We, meaning what I'm trying to say is, we cannot increase the retail price. Am I right, Mark, Mr. Mark? We cannot increase the retail price. So what this bill pass, what's gonna happen? The bottom will suffer, our net profit will suffer. When net profit suffer, what's gonna happen? We will lose the budget to training people, we will lose the safety, number one issue, and we will also lose providing a quality facility and equipment because it's all about money issue. When safety is a jeopardize, we deal with the Coast Guard, parks and recreation, everything. We will not have a manpower, we put training people, Red Cross, Coast Guard, CPR, everything. We might have to cut down. So where is the safety? When minimum wage went down, I mean went up couple of years ago till now, does Guam crime late, crime rate went down, economy went up? I don't think so. But if you study hard, it's all related. People may make hundred dollars more on the net, but they're gonna drink hundred dollars more in the beer. The margins are not gonna change anything, but productivity will go lower. It's already proving. Guam is suffering right now and as a private sector, I don't have a push bell to call Mr. Obama. Hey, Mr. Obama, I'm Mima Iwana from Ocean Jet Club, can I borrow some money? That's what private sector does. When crisis hit, we have to manage, we have to find a way within ourselves. We don't get any support, period. But this one is gonna kill us for sure. We are not beggar, we are hardworking, honest private sector. We don't beg, we always find a way, but this one will hit us really hard. Yep, when typhoon Pon Song were hit, I know tax and revenue record already show so many hundreds of business closed down, that's the clear. When the minimum wage went up couple of years ago, so many business shut down, that's already clear. Why we have to repeat the same thing so we already experienced? And this jump is too high, too much. Again, let me tell you, I have a no problem incentive. People who work hard, let's give it to them, they deserve a good life. People don't, no, they're gonna have to think and what is the problem? They cannot make any more money, they have to come to come back to herself. I get mixed message, what are we gonna teach to our loving children? You guys always say children is our future. How we gonna teach the children? We don't have to work so hard, just never mind the college. High school, you can get a ten dollars an hour, you can make twenty-five hundred a month, entry level. I don't think so, I don't wanna become mom like that. I want them to try, try and try, seek the better life, seek the better education, seek what you want to do in your life, not using somebody else's money. No, giving an incentive, earning is a different. I will, I will support all the incentive and benefit also. Benefit is also, it's getting tough. You know cafeteria program, it require number of people. It's not like we can get everybody health insurance because premium is very high. So cafeteria program, I appreciate that, but still, it's a big number. I employ forty plus cafeteria require cafeteria program require twenty-five people. So twenty-five out of forty has a health insurance under what? Benefit. It's benefit, but I'm gonna have to take that away. It breaks my heart, it breaks my heart. Who's gonna be in the blacklist or I'm gonna put their name in pick on on the basket? That's not fair, but that's what's gonna happen. So please reconsider and like Mr. Baldiga say, or Mr. Peter Carson say, please study before you push this bill. Study what went on since the last minimum wage went up, is any good happen? Bad is still bad. What positive happen? I don't think so. And I have a very good connection with the governor of Hawaii, I spoke to couple days ago. Their mentality is amazing, they have a strong hundred ten percent admitting we cannot live without a tourism as a state of Hawaii. This is the time again, Guam has to really make admitting Guam needs a tourism. More than half of that private sector involving with a tourism. So please listen to our voice, if you cannot respect, but at least listen and at least question it. If you have nothing, not understanding anything, please ask us. This is the voice, I wish we can just enjoy sitting on the beach, coconut will drop and we can create money selling coconut. Then we don't have to do these tourist hardest things. But unfortunately, coconut doesn't produce nothing but a coconut. We can make money out of that. So please remember the states of Hawaii, the beautiful Hawaii, beautiful Guam. We must admit it, this island cannot survive without a tourism. Tourism is so important, not just by number, it is so important, it become our culture. Food stamp and getting unofficial support, that is not our culture. People try to get a pay raise, she have enough to say refuse, so I lose the food stamp? Something is wrong here. I wanna give people incentive, I wanna train people, but not giving, I am against it. Thank you very much and sorry for my emotion, I told you so.
No problem, thank you, you did well. Thank you, Ms. Iwana, for your testimony. Mr. Afaji, Ron? Yes, okay, go ahead, yeah. Just state your name for the record.
It's Joe, I'm the operation manager for Ocean Jet Club. I'm here today not to voice my opinion, but to voice my concern in regards to Bill three one six. When we had this discussion with Ms. Iwana in the office, I was somewhat disturbed about it. My two main concerns would be the happening of my staffs and the safety of my operation. First of all, I've been with Ocean Jet Club for fifteen years and it's been open for over twenty-five years, something like that. And throughout those times, there was never a time in the office that we had a discussion or a meeting in regards to laying people off. And from what we discussed, if this should happen and we should lay people off, it would be a heartache to me to have to bring any of my staff who is hardworking and cooperate and well-trained in regards to this matter, to look at them in the eye and tell them that we cannot afford to have you here because of the increase of the wages and the approval of Bill three one six. Two concerns for me is the staff and the safety of my operation, like I said. If this happens and we do have to lay people off, God forbid, we do. I deal with a lot of machineries such as jet skis and banana boats and parasailing and stuff like that. Every time we hear in the news in regards to drowning victims that happened in Ipau or even at Dunce Beach, majority of the time it's because of our tourism. And I took it upon myself to discuss it with my upper management to provide more manpower so that we can be more aware and be more, you know, alert of our surroundings. Because Guam waters did take a lot of people, from Japanese to local fishermen's, well-trained fishermen, qualified fishermen, certified fishermen, whatever may be. We cannot judge the waters like that because playing with nature is taking a risk in life. And the hardest thing for anyone to go through is for someone to have to experience that kind of situation if it ever does happen. And I can't find it within myself to be a part of that. That's why I do whatever I can, I take whatever drastic movements I can to try to prevent that from happening. We're in the tourism industry and if I'm not mistaken, I believe tourism is a big reason why this rock is what it is today, our island. And to take that away from us, to try to, to try to decrease my manpower in regards to providing safeties to our guests, I see that it's not fair and that, you know, it's, it's well disturbing. I have a course and a swimming area that side to side. We have buoys and every safety, safety procedures we can possibly think of. But in regards to all that, I put every man in each corner because our guests, when they're on a ski, they're sometimes uncontrollable and they just don't know how to handle the skis. But we're there, we're not, I'm not saying that we're gonna stop it, but we're there to try to prevent it from happening so that we don't have to go through any of that situations. So if we do, or if you guys do decide to pass this three one six, in the past twenty years, we will be forced to do what we've never done, we've never even had a discussion of, and that's laying people off from work. We've never had the discussion in any of our meetings, in any of our conversations. We understand that tourism is like a roller coaster, we have our ups and our downs, we have our busy time, our busy season and our slow seasons. We take drastic measures such as cutting hours and giving extra days off. But the staff that are with me at my work, they truly enjoy what they're doing and they look forward to coming to work every day. Now to take that away from them, to let them know that because of this increase that has happened, it's even hard to decide or to choose which one of these guys when they're all trained equally and fair, to decide even which one of them that we're gonna let go. It's a heartbreaker and I pray to God that it doesn't happen because tourism is a big part of this island. And with this increase, if we have to do the layoffs or the firing of our employees, it'll change our whole operation and as well as the safety that we are prioritized in our company to do. That's pretty much, thank you very much.
Thank you also for your testimony and your participation at this hearing. Mr. Afaji, Ron?
Hafiri.
You can stay, excuse me Frank, in case there's some questions, yeah, if you have time. Go ahead, you may continue, no, Ron, yeah.
Hafiri, my name is Ronald Afaji. Thank you Senators for allowing me to come up and speak. If you all know, I'm a very strong component for the Chamor cultural aspect. And I, you know, it's been my passion since two thousand and eight, I'm sorry, since nineteen eighty-three when we first pioneered Tata Otono, that one day, one day, someday, we will be at the hotel room. Sorry. We'd be, we'd be working down in Tumon somehow, whether it be through dances or chants or displaying culture in some form or fashion, it has to do with our Chamor people. We were given an opportunity in two thousand and eleven, a chance to build something that all of us probably only seen in the books, and that's, and that's to build the village in N'Nala. I myself, as the lead for that project, took it very personal. Hired a lot of the local guys, none of them had any skills, none. And I paid them minimum wage, you know, I just told them this all we can, we can help you with. But it wasn't about the minimum wage, it was the passion of doing something they've always wanted to do. And I can't foresee, right now, with this nonprofit organization that we're with, and soon, we'll be preparing to sail a traditional canoe built by a lot of our young, still going to school, and some of our teenagers and even young adults, soon we'll be putting out a traditional sailing canoe that'll be ready here by summertime. And throughout this practice of talking about, you know, you gotta work hard. We can't just give this to you without working for it. I can't, I can't tell you to go and buy an iPad if you don't know how to work to get it. I teach the kids that, you know, your work ethics is very important in the Chamor culture. And this is what we do as Chamors, I was brought up that way. And that's what I'm practicing to them. And these kids are still in elementary, some of them are gonna be graduating this year, some of them have already graduated, and some of them are even working down in N'Nala in the park, mind you. It's their first time, they couldn't even, you wouldn't even see them wear a Sadi. They wouldn't even wear a Sadi, now they're bound to go around with Sadi even in the bar. And they're only high school kids. So it's something they've earned and they're very proud of. I don't see that this, this raising of ten dollars is gonna make any impact to any of our people for that matter. I think it's more important that they should know ethics, they should know work, they should know how to work. They should know how to put their mind to something. I teach that to my own kids. Why should we hand out the iPad when throughout all this time I've been telling them you gotta work for it, you have to work for it. If you only get seven, be happy. When you get ten, you'll be more happier. But if seven is all I can give you, then be happy with seven. Just don't work any less than what I ask you to do. I don't wanna see this, we've worked so hard perpetuating the culture in Tumon. Soon, hopefully, I've worked so hard with our kids to build canoes so that one day we will see traditional canoes out in Tumon paddling with the tourists so that they can say this is ours, this really belongs to Chamors. If this happens, then maybe we might not, they might even, I don't even think they even want us down there. You know, it'd be hard for us to try to ask the hotel, can you support this organization in providing services for the stuff that we wanna do as Chamors? Can we take them out sailing, can we even take them out for paddling? If we kill this and it hurts the economy and the tourism, then it also hurt our culture. I really want you guys to consider, you know, please look at it again. It's not, it's not just, it's not just giving out a ten dollar an hour bonus, it's, it's about... It's about everybody. It's even more for us in the cultural side. I want them to know that you have to earn, you know, you have to earn it, and that's what we're going to do. I don't want you guys all of a sudden accept this and use this as a handout for them because it's not what we're practicing, it's not what we're trying to do with our kids. So I oppose to this bill and, you know, please, if whatever you do in your heart, find this, you know, munganung pinipunit sa moro, you know, mungamanababay, don't make us bad, don't make us feel bad. Right now, we've even brought the kids out to even perform at night in Nynala. You know, it's doing things for us, it's helping us out. You know, if Mr. Podegas says it's going to hurt us, then it is going to hurt us. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you also. I invite Senators to ask any questions. Mr. Vice Speaker?
Mr. Panglinen, as the former Administrator of GIDEA, have you had the chance to review the census report that was issued yesterday? The Census Bureau report about the growth in the economy and the number of jobs?
No, I saw a blurb of a headline and I saw a total job count as of 2012, somewhere around 56,000. And I also saw that from that period that the economy has grown.
And?
I guess it was like 7 to 12 or 8 to 12.
Inasmuch as you've not had a chance to review it, I'm not going to ask you questions any further, but I would just ask, with your education and your experience as the former Administrator of GIDEA, would you provide us a report, I mean, review the information that was provided and explain to us where you believe it's incorrect in its analysis and its findings?
The report that was just released yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a look and provide some comment back.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no questions from this panel. Thank you again for your participation. I'd like to invite up Mr. Phil Flores, Mr. Joe Roberto, Mr. Milton Morywasa. You're not testifying. But your position on the bill would be duly noted by the committee, as well as Mr. Tesoro. Here, okay, your position also will be duly noted by the committee. Can I have them? Mr. Vice Speaker Nelson, were you going to testify or just? Just want to acknowledge your presence as well. Mr. Gerard Huffer, you're here, please. And Mr. Gerhard Schwab, yeah. Okay, Mr. Flores, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. Honorable Chairman Respecio, members of the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resource and Election Reform, I'm Philip Flores and I come here today to testify in opposition to Bill 316-32, a bill which would raise the minimum wage in Guam by 39%. Many told me not to bother to testify today, that this is an election year and nothing can stop this bill. That may be so, it may be not, but I nonetheless want to let you know my thoughts on this matter of great importance to the health and well-being of the economic system in Guam and that of all of its stakeholders, employers and employees included. I'm not going to argue. Many of you are my friends on both sides of the aisle, or shall I say, both ends of the table. I've already spoken to Senator Cruz and some of the others, a few others of you about this bill. This is not the only issue on which we've worked together and it won't be the last. To start, I must say the comments in the media that employers go to sleep in million-dollar mansions while not paying their employees fairly helps no one. I'm an employer and our companies are fair. We help people, many of whom started with us at minimum wage and now are supervisors, vice presidents, members of our boards, many of whom have worked for our companies for 10, 15, and even 25 years and beyond. Second, at last week's hearing, companies not from Guam were discussed as though they were second-class citizens. I'd love to be just Bank Pacific and Bank of Guam, Guam's two local banks, that we were the only banks, but that would not be good for our community, so we welcome the other banks. And I certainly would not like to see Guam without a Micronesia mall and a Gania Shopping Center, GTA IT&amp;E, Delco Mo, Delta, the Hilton, Hyatt, on and on. Our island community is tight-knit. We are interwoven, and that means all of us need to respect each other in business, in government, in not-for-profit organizations, in churches and schools because together, we are one. We need to work to unite, not to divide. Don't let any issue divide us. You know, my first thought is that the federal government is going to mandate on this matter, so why are we jumping the gun? Let's wait to see what comes out of Washington. If it turns out to be more than 1010, we are stuck with it, the good and the bad. If it turns out to be something less than 1010, we don't want to be the overpriced, we don't want to be overpriced compared to other jurisdictions in America. Right now, Washington has the highest statewide minimum wage in the country at 932. As an aside, according to the April 16th edition of the San Francisco Chronicle, San Francisco has the highest minimum wage in the country at 1074. According to the same edition, in fact, the same article, it has the highest per capita rate of homeless people in the nation. We have heard many individuals, companies and organizations saying the increase would cost jobs and shorten workers' hours, and that would also cause greater inflation. And it would. Why? Because private companies and not-for-profit companies such as charitable organizations and private schools must make a profit to survive. We cannot run on a deficit. For us, it's not even called a deficit. It is instead referred to as closure and bankruptcy. The Congressional Budget Office estimates that once a 1010 minimum wage as proposed by President Obama is fully implemented, it could reduce employment across the country by 500,000, with an outside chance of costing 1 million jobs. Last September, President Obama signed into law a bill which was passed unanimously in the Senate and 415 to nothing in the House, which delayed further implementation of a minimum wage increase in the Commonwealth of the North Marianas because of the damage it was causing to the Marianas, to the Commonwealth. It's no secret why. Minimum wages, like most public policies, confront us with trade-offs. An employed, low-skilled worker who keeps his job earns a slightly higher wage, but a worker who loses his job pays a much higher cost. And given Guam's present economic conditions, which include high unemployment and conditions which send members of all of our families off-island in search of employment, the imperative instead should be to create and enhance job opportunities. Okay, I know, we're all getting excited about the buildup again. Thanks, but no Kool-Aid for me, please. I'll believe the buildup when I see it. And tourism? Yeah. We've had a couple of good years, but our rivals are still below what they were in 1995, 1996, 1997. And the most recent data from the Guam Hotel Restaurant Association, which appeared in the March 26th edition of the Marianas Business Journal, showed that fiscal year-to-date, we've actually sold fewer hotel rooms in 2014 than we have in 2013. Our economy is small, which makes it so fragile. As I say each year when we convene our strategic planning sessions, we're always just one day away from another typhoon, another SARS-like pandemic event, another tsunami, or God forbid, another terrorist attack. So I'm suggesting that we take a step forward and conduct a true independent study on the effects of minimum wage, of a minimum wage increase for Guam rather than just guessing. Chairman Respecio, Senator Cruz, I believe you were the sponsors of the legislation which created the Special Economic Service. I further believe the service was set up to include the senior economist at the Department of Rev and Tax, chief planner of the Bureau of Planning, chief economist at Department of Commerce, now GIDEA, the research manager at GVB, the senior economist at Labor, and a private sector economist and the administrator of GIDEA. I propose that we call together this committee to truly look into the effects of the bill. And if not the Special Economic Service, then some other independent forum should be held at which community stakeholders can debate the merits and the drawbacks of the government-mandated minimum wage increases. If we are going to do something so sweeping to our home, let's make sure we're doing the right thing, or at least doing it right. In closing, there have been talks of reducing the GRT to lessen the admitted effect on businesses. First, it would not even begin to offset the effect. Second, our government is doing well now, but that's not always the case. In other words, in the long run, GovGuam cannot afford to reduce the GRT. Thus, I ask that we keep the GRT where it is. Thank you. I'm open for questions now or whenever it's convenient for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores. We do have your testimony and it'd be part of the record. Mr. Roberto.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Senators, good afternoon. My name is Joe Roberto. I own with my brother East Island Tinning, North Island Tinning, and now Paradise Auto Spa. Over the years, and I was very happy to do this, our benefits for such a small company with just over 10 employees, we have a pay scale. And our benefits include, besides pay increases, we have vacation with pay, holiday with pay. We administer Aflap. We provide medical and dental insurance. We give profit sharing. We have a retirement plan. We also created an incentive. We fly out our employees, our staff, to the mainland for certain special training. We do this, we reinvest in our people, in our staff. We cannot do this if this happens. We allow our staff to grow. I have not slept yet because I'm already considering shutting down an operation. This decision, if chosen to do so, will seriously, seriously devalue what we put into, our training, our self, our passion for what we do to serve. This is very serious, and I don't mean to sound so emotional, but I can't get over it. I thank those who have emailed because, for what I give back to the community. I do church things, a bunch of you guys know I do a soccer thing. And every single day, every day, Senators, somebody, 1, 2, 3, up to 10, every single day, come ask me for money in my shop. About five years ago, I stopped paying myself. North Island Tinning, East Island Tinning, and Paradise Auto Spa, I don't receive pay. Okay? That's zero. I gave that up for what's called profit sharing, retirement, and training. It is because our staff deserve it, they earn it. My wife and I combine to what we can to provide. Every Sunday, we go to church. I take care of collection. It's so funny because I have a lot of fun passing around those baskets because at times I stop in the middle and sir over there, he sees me doing that, I stop, and I'm just holding it there, and they look up at me, and I'm just holding it there. I'm saying, I'm not going to move until you put something in here because Father Felix is going to get mad at me. So I mean, it's funny, but that is a pouring, it's a gesture out of the kindness of our hearts. And the way we were raised, the way I was raised, it is such that everything comes back to you. And to hear of such rumors, the lady earlier mentioned she had a couple, or I had a couple of employees in the past that, hey, Joe, don't give me any raise because we're not going to get that benefit. Because, you know what, when I get that food stamp and I buy all that Ichiban, then we go to the baseball park and we start selling it for a cup of noodles, hot dogs, stuff like that. And I'm like, you know, you take that creativity to make money and you use it to benefit others. How inventive and creative you are to do such a thing, to take advantage of the food stamp system. But if we provide that education for them and support just to have them stay at home, because that's what this is teaching, stay at home, do nothing, get paid. I cannot compete with that. I cannot give increases, medical, dental. We have an IWF International Windows Film Accreditation. We fly out our staff to get this accreditation. If they pass that test, if they pass that test, they can get up to a dollar more. But they have to earn it, they have to study it. Every single month, we have our staff meeting, which is paid for them to stay, they have to listen to me and they have to take a test. It is for their benefit, which I try to teach, it ultimately benefits who? The consumer. And then right back, the quality of our install and education is margin, far more than just what we provide. It's education, it's lessons. It teaches those that hopefully goes beyond. But Senators, with all due respect, I grew up on a farm, there was 11 of us, I had no formal education, barely made it through school. I worked at Jackson's Car Wash, and today, today, I make a decent living. I have four kids, a grandson. I just came back from Aruba with the men's national team. I just came back from Hong Kong with my daughter. And everything, it's just, I leave nothing, everything's out on the table. If you want to know the formula of how I do this and not get paid, I would be more than happy to teach you. And I am not a college graduate, but I do work hard and I try to work smart, and I listen and I copy. That's how I made it through school. I copied these guys, like this guy right here. You know, I try to learn what these guys know. I read, I study. Thank you, Phil. And a couple other notes. Everyone that said what they needed to say, I don't need to go down the line, but a couple of my staff, I asked, what do you guys think about this? Oh, boss, I'll quit and start again. Oh, I'll quit and find an easier, less stressful job. I'll be making more money than what you're paying me. Oh, I don't know because everything will go up. I like it because I'll make more. This is what, I am doing my part to teach because at the level we tint windows and we clean cars, we don't get college graduates to apply. I am trying to teach those that even a farm boy from Ipan who can provide as much as I provide, they can do that too. That's what I try to teach, and it's not going to happen with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Mr. Roberto, for your testimony. We'll go in the order that I have, here's in the sign-up sheet, so Mr. Huffer, you're next. Yeah. Yeah, you're on.
Good afternoons.
Good afternoon.
Gentlemen, sir, senators, ma'am. My name is Gerard Huffer. I'm the owner and the director of Adventures in Learning, a Child Development Center. We've been doing, we've been running our Child Development Center for 19 years now. We're a very small business. When I listen to all these gentlemen speak before me, they're up there with numbers of employees. I'm a six-employee business, not counting my wife and I, who we work for free also, we don't pay ourselves. So I have six staff members. But the job that we do is very, very important. I don't think that there's, yes, tourism is very important for our industry, you know, there's a lot of very important businesses. there's a lot of very important businesses here. But what we work with, what we deal with, is the development, the early development of children. And this is our, our future. What do we instill in our children? The importance of early development is building that foundation for their ethics, their moral standards, their learning, their future. It's the foundation that is very important. A few years ago, a couple years ago, standards changed on Guam for early childhood, for daycare centers. Several of my colleagues closed shop. They couldn't meet the standards, it was very difficult. The way for us that stayed open, were able to, was when the other centers closed down, we absorbed some of their children. That helped us out. So, standards had changed, it got harder for us, but we were able to survive. It requires one staff to provide the care and developmental, educational setting for four infants. That's four children gonna pay one staff. As, that's in the infancy. When it comes to toddlers, it's six, six children to pay one staff. Right now, we're also facing more standards being raised up, and the universal preschool system, which is an awesome system, and that's going to involve preschoolers. But I'm talking about our business as it is now, with our infants and our toddlers, which is what we're gonna be basically working with. It's gonna be very difficult. We don't have the luxury of providing all these benefits and pay raises, pay increase to our staffs. A lot of them are at minimum wage already. And yet, we're talking about the development of children, the most important asset that we have on Guam, our children. And it comes to a point where some of my colleagues are shutting their doors, closing up shop, because it got so difficult. We approached you a couple years ago, and you gave us a break with our GRT. That was very helpful. That kept us alive, just to thread water and survive. This right here, I provided, I don't know if you have it in front of you, I provide just a quick breakdown, and it's very simple. Bottom line is, where is this going to go? It's gonna go to the parents. Our parents are going to have to pay the difference, because I cannot survive and absorb it any longer. It would have to be my parents that would have to, that would have to absorb the cost increase. And we're looking at a cost increase of $2.85 per hour. My business stays open eleven hours, because parents work eight to nine hours, including their lunch hour, plus travel time, another hour for travel time, they work different hours. So, I have to be open for eleven hours in order for the children, the parents, to have a place to put their children, so they can go and work and earn their minimum wage, you know? My staff have to be there eleven hours, whether the children come or not. I cannot pay them for that full eleven hours, so I have to double up on staff, so that they can rotate and alternate, because I have to cover entire eleven hours for the That, that brings it down to about $242 per month for me to operate. I'm gonna pay each staff an increase of $689.70, an increase of $689 per staff, increase per month on their payroll. These might not seem like very big numbers, when you're talking about the hotel industry and the tourism industry and all that, but for us laymen, at the level that we're at and the struggles that we're going through right now, that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money for our parents to switch from paying $575, which is the average rate right now for an infant to be watched at a childcare center, to raise that up $200 more. And some of our parents have multiple children in our centers. We have a couple parents that have three children, and they have to pay for three children to go to daycare centers. Can you imagine? 775 times three, I didn't even do that math, but for a parent to pay that money for childcare? I'm sorry. But the bottom line is, in order for us to continue providing the quality for our young children, it's got to go to the parents. We have to pass this cost on to the parents. The parents are gonna pay $200 more a month for childcare, on top of their gas prices that they gotta pay for their car, because the gas station gonna raise it up, the can of Spam that's $3 gonna go up to $4 or $5, you know? They're gonna have to do that. And they're providing the snacks and the lunch for their children. They bring it, they buy it over at, way in a store right next to my daycare center. That store makes a lot of money off of the parents going over there and buying snacks and Ichiban and Lunchables and things like that, and bringing it over. So, they're already spending a good $10 or $15 a day at that store right next door for their child to eat snacks and lunch. This is going to increase also. That being said, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to talk, and I don't know the solutions. I don't know the solutions. I'm not an economic major or student or anything like that. All I know is that we care for our children that we have, we try to do the best that we have with our children, their development, and that's what we're just gonna keep on working on until we can't do it no more. But we can't do it for free. We can't do it for free. And right now, my wife and I are doing it for free. We're just paying the bills, and that's it. There's no, no extra in there to put into savings, or no extra to go on a trip, on a vacation, none of that. It's just paying the bills, and we're just surviving. And that GRT did help us just to survive. Other colleagues have closed their doors. If this passes, there's gonna be more centers closing down. And where will the investment in our youth, our young, our children go? It's gonna be back at home, sitting in front of a TV, because the parents can't afford to put them into childcare centers, or into any kind of schooling. Thank you, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you also for your presentation. Mr. Schwab?
Good afternoon, and thank you, honorable senators. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the issue of increasing the minimum wage. My name is Gerhard Schwab. I'm a student and faculty at the University of Guam, and I'm a member of the Catholic Church. But I just speak for myself. I don't speak for any of the organizations. The current minimum wage structure is part of an upside-down welfare system that spends more money on the benefits of corporations, middle class, and wealthy people than on poor people. It is part of an economy of exclusion and equality. From a Catholic, Christian point of view, low minimum wages reflect the structural sins of society. Over decades, various global organizations document widening and deepening gaps between the haves and have-nots among and within countries around the world. We are now at a point where the richest eighty-five people in the world have as much wealth as the bottom half of the world's population, 3.5 billion people. In the United States, according to President Obama, whereas in the past, the average CEO in the U.S. made about twenty to thirty times the income of the average worker, today's CEOs make 273 times more. And meanwhile, a family in the top one percent has a net worth of 288 times higher than a typical family, which is a record in this country. We all know that our local situation, Guam, is not much different from those global and national trends, as researched and presented well by other speakers before me and in the last hearing. The cost of living rise faster than the incomes of people in the lowest strata of the economic ladder. The incomes of the upper-middle class and the rich increase much faster than their cost of living. The rich get richer, the poor get poorer. The number of the working poor, people working two or three part-time jobs on minimum wage and who are still poor, increases. President Obama further states that this increasingly inequality, this increasing inequality is especially pronounced in the U.S., and that is, challenges the very essence of who we are as a people. Mostly, the people who benefit from this growing inequality try to discard or silence the importance of this societal transformation. But more and more research clearly generates evidence that the many adverse consequences of inequality affect not only those at the lower end of the distribution, but also those who would seem to benefit from it. Inequality leads to less stable, inefficient economic systems that restrain economic growth and pose a serious barrier to the eradication of poverty. This in turn reduces the contribution of economic growth to social development and reduces social mobility. Now, this is a quote by the United Nations report on the social situation of the world in 2013, and that is grounded in the experience of more than hundred countries around the world. And if I may add a quote from the Pope, "Inequality is the root of social ills." So, why is it that the inequality in our societies is increasing? I argue that low minimum wages are part of a bigger welfare system that has turned upside down and now channels more tax money into the upper-middle and highest strata of our economic ladder than it is helping poor people. This hidden or shadow welfare system for the rich is part of the overall societal evolution that produces this increasing inequality with all its associated social problems. I give two brief examples on national level, and then provide some local examples of how I think our welfare system for corporation and the rich makes the rich richer while the poor keep working for minimum wages. Minimum wages that steadily decrease in their values, and how this produces problems for all of us. We simply can define public welfare as the government giving money to someone in order to improve his, her, or its well-being. This means we need to include the tax expenditures into our consideration. Tax expenditures represent dollars the government chooses not to collect. Few people think of the tax code as a social welfare system. I think we need to, because the government views tax expenditures as analogous to the direct-outlay programs. The two are considered alternative means of accomplishing similar budget policy objectives. That's a quote of the Joint Committee on Taxation in 1998. I agree that these explicit breaks in the tax code are the moral and fiscal equivalent of the governments simply mailing a check. To pay for them, other people's taxes have to be raised, other benefits have to be cut, or deficits have to be increased. An examination of funding levels, benefit amounts, vulnerability to cuts reveal that the fiscal welfare system clearly favors economically advantaged groups. On national level, tax expenditures have continuously increased for a long time. Or in other words, the government is choosing more and more not to collect money from corporations to advance the corporate welfare. For example, the proportions of federal tax revenue by corporate tax income has been reduced by half in the four decades between 1960 and 2000, from about 20.5% of the total federal tax revenue in 1962 to only about 10% in 2000. Focusing in on tax expenditures for business investments, we see, for example, that the governments paying for business meals and entertainment has increased from 3.4 billion in 96 to 27.6 billion within only six years, from 96 to 2002. These national trends have continued until now, and have made America a society, a 1% society that we read in the news about half a year ago and the Occupy events in New York. But let's think about our community here. Let's ask ourselves, how many businesses and corporations have received qualifying certificates and other exemptions from paying their taxes? I contend that if we add up all the numbers of, if we add up all the numbers of the past five decades, the government of Guam has opted to not collect more taxes from corporations than it has given to poor people, including poor people working on minimum wage. If I'm wrong, I'm very happy to be corrected. In addition to this, we also need to factor in the social capital of a community that is necessary for businesses to operate. Workers on minimum wage have families, sooner or later, some family members get sick or have some other unexpected expenses. Workers are only good workers as long as they are part of healthy families. Let's guess how many workers in our hotels in Tuamun are working poor. I don't know the exact number, but I bet the number is higher than we all think. We all would be very surprised when we really would know. So, what happens when a minimum wage worker in the Hyatt or Hilton Hotel cannot afford housing for his or her family? They seek assistance from Gura. If their income is not enough to buy enough food for their children, they get the quest card. And if they get sick, they don't seek treatment for too long, and when it gets really bad, they end up in the emergency room in our public hospital. And then, if they miss work at their hotel because they get the GovGuam bureaucratic runaround to meet their medical and familial needs, they get fired. In brief, hotels get exempted from paying taxes while the government of Guam pays for the medical and social needs of the hotel workers. This is what I view as indirect corporate welfare. The minimum wage advances the well-being of the hotel corporations, while governments have to pay for the health and social well-being of the underpaid workers. But not only in Tuamun, throughout Guam, we can observe how the minimum wage hurts all of us. Let's go to the south, to Talafoco or Malazo. You will find families, depending on heads of households and breadwinners, on minimum wage. Because Dunhuang's income is too low, he cannot afford health insurance for his wife. Due to lack of preventive medical care, his wife's high blood pressure remains untreated for years. And then, still relatively young, she has a stroke. Now, who pays for the hospital expenses? Medical treatment. Instead of having a healthy wife, mother, grandmother for the next twenty, thirty years, one's family now has to care for his seriously sick wife for the rest of his life. This family will continuously need more services and help from public health. This unexpected and unnecessary caregiving situation is just one more stressor in an already poor and stressful household. With better pay and better healthcare, this situation could have easily been prevented. As this example illustrates, too low minimum wages are actually more expensive for the overall society than proper living wages and proper healthcare. I close my statement with my Catholic, Christian point of view of this issue, and a statement of our new Pope Francis. Using the paradigms of Catholic social teachings, I view an economy that is designed to privilege small groups of people at the expense of those who work for minimum wage as sinful. And again, Pope Francis, quote, "The need to resolve the structural causes of poverty cannot be delayed, not only the pragmatic reason, not only for the pragmatic reason of its urgency for the good order of society, but because society needs to be cured of a sickness which is weakening and frustrating it, and which can only lead to new craziness." frustrating it and which can only lead to new crises. Welfare projects which meet certain urgent needs should be considered merely temporary responses. As long as the problem of the poor are not radically resolved by rejecting the absolute autonomy of markets and financial speculation and by attacking the structural causes of inequality, no solution will be found for the world's problem, or for that matter, not any problem." Honorable senators, Bill 316 to increase the minimum wage will not heal the sickness of our society, but it will provide a much-needed band-aid to stop the bleeding for at least some people for some time. I strongly support Bill 316.
Thank you also for your testimony. We have a copy of which will be included in the committee report as well. Any questions? Senator Wiggins?
I have a comment first and then I have a question. I think this panel embodies exactly the dilemma, and I want to thank Mr. Baldiga and other members and folks who have made strong presentations, Phil Flores and the like, on the issue of the comparison and the issues of the tax issues. I will concede, after having seen some very large numbers, that there is a drastic inequality, especially having to have left the issue of the DeSantis Amendment, which I think Mr. Gerard aptly put forward, the intention of the balanced approach originally. What I will say is, in working with my colleagues and also with the governor's office, the discussion on the policy was designed to do exactly what you've asked for, a study. More important information to be put forward in order to be able to balance the perspective and do this in a manner, if it's to be done moving forward, in a way that balances out all the concerns that have been brought forwards thus far. Gerard, I have to say that we've worked together a number of times on policies, and I understand your position here. I have to ask you a couple of questions, because I think, once again, also, your testimony embodied the need also for that study. Because what you've laid out here is a lot of social issues that are not necessarily balanced by the direct discussion that you make. I have to say that, having worked in the tourism industry for a long time and the hotel industry, understanding the issues, the issue of taxes will, can be debated, that there would be no investment, that there would be no jobs, and that there are jobs that are much higher paying in the tourism industry other than entry-level positions. But my specific question, other than the study, is directly to you. Working in a higher educational institution and having co-equal institutions such as GCC, Trades Academy, and all these employers who spend their money as well, training their employees and getting them up to levels well beyond minimum wage, having careers, actually, how do we balance this perspective of all wanting to do the same thing, all wanting to help the same people that you discuss as a Christian, as a Catholic, and as a human being? How do we balance that against and still maintain all those thousands of young people going to University of Guam, GCC, Trades Academy, and the employees attending all of the training and workforce development within their companies as having an incentive based on continuously graduating wages, maybe not commensurate to giving them what Mr. Roberto talked about and what he tries to do in his company, to advance and develop his staff?
I guess I'm kind of the old kid on the block, but I want to, as a background, a personal experience I had, I was working five years in an organization where everybody had the same pay, whether you had a PhD or just a college, high school, everybody had the same pay. And it was a wonderful experience. It was a very, very good experience. That's as a background. I do think that people who have an education are already privileged. And I think that people who just have a high school degree or don't even have a high school degree, they have the same needs as I in terms of basic food, basic housing, right? So if I have, I mean, I have five, six academic college degrees, but the people, my neighbors on minimum wage, they still have to pay the same price for their rice and for their chicken as I have. So I really think that for educated people, if we raise the minimum wage, a critical educated analysis of that only can applaud it, because I will win too. If everybody, I as an educated person who has a 15, 20, 30, 40, $50 hourly wage, we all win if the minimum wage goes up and people can better participate in the mainstream economy, can better meet their immediate economic needs. I really think everybody will benefit. And there comes a breaking point. If the inequality of society gets too big, then societies pay a high, high, high price. You know how many people are in prisons in the United States? Over 2 million. We pay a high price. I mean, that's one of the consequences of having inequality in society, we put people into jail and pay a lot of money for it. So I really think that education people, my college graduates, the students that I, and then I teach also at the university in Austria in summer, every summer, and I have colleagues from Finland, from Sweden, from all over Europe, and their experience with minimum wage is just very, very different, right? I mean, people there have a much higher minimum wage, there's a higher middle class, lower economic people are pushed up by public policies, and people at the higher end of the, in Australia, they're taxed into the midstream. But they pay less, less, the public expenses are much less for crime and other social ills. So it's, I think, it's all, and I think we shouldn't argue whether, okay, you are on welfare and I should say, or you business people are on welfare, and we shouldn't play the blame game. Bottom line, from my analysis, we are all on welfare. Everyone. You are on welfare because you benefit from governmental, depends how you define it, right? I mean--
I'm not on welfare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, that's an argument, a dialogue we can have, but we all benefit, we all benefit from a well-functioning government.
Yeah, I think that, once again, in my opinion, you've proven that, especially coming from a research-based institution, that this is a much bigger question than any magic bullet can be purported on either side of the equation. So, I mean, so I would just end with asking you that, Phil, as well. I mean, would you reiterate, then, that this requires for sure a study and that even, and that even as possible, as the possibility that the tax benefits don't even come close to reaching the issue, but there would be, have to be, a study would probably bear out that there'd have to be some sort of give?
Yeah, well, I definitely think we should say this more if we're talking about the minimum wage issue, but, and I appreciate your argument, and the wonderful thing about America is we can say whatever we want, but we're talking with two business people up here who are not one of the 1%ers, who don't work with the 1%ers, who are talking about their business going out of business if the minimum wage increase goes through. We're talking about, you know, when we talk about, what was it, the 1% have more, or the top 95 have more than whatever that statistic was, and it's the same here in Guam? I don't see that. I don't see multi-billionaires here in Guam. I don't, did Bill Gates move here? Did the Shah move here? Did the Prince of Saudi move here? That's who we're talking about. I don't see that in Guam. I see it as actually a pretty equal society. We have a lot of new immigrants who have come up from Micronesia over the last 20 or 25 years, and it's important that we get them into the community, because as you say, BJ, a lot of them are, because of economic issues or demographic issues, there's perhaps a disproportionate amount of crime in that community, and, which is why we try to bring them into our companies and educate them, train them, so they're not in the bottom of the barrel anymore. That's what we do to try to help. But, you know, if we're going to talk on a big social issue and inequality, I love Pope Francis also, by the way, and I'm glad he's our Pope. And you're probably a better Catholic than I am, and you're one of those mean, terrible business people I'm here finding out about, only because you collect the money. I pay the money. Hello, Archbishop? It's me again.
And to a lot of other charities as well.
Yeah, we do, we support a lot. But again, this is a, this is a minimum wage issue that we're talking about today. And I know it's hard and you want to give more money to people, but what are you going to do with this business? What are you going to do with that business? What are you going to do with Mark's business? Everybody thinks, oh gee, Mark, you're a big, rich guy. You can wipe out his, wipe out his income. The bank, we'll only be, we'll be affected by like 70,000 after the three years, because we don't have anybody at minimum, but this, and that's without compression, but we have people below 10, 10, but we bring them up. Okay, so, over three years, how do we, how do we figure that out? I don't know, but we figure it out and we keep going, because I don't think you're asking companies to make less money. You know, there's a much easier way to do that, and that's just increase taxes, but that's much more politically unpopular. But the, and I'm telling you, don't decrease taxes, don't decrease the GRT. We're talking about the survival of the business community and what we can do to create more jobs. I say I won't drink the Kool-Aid on the buildup, but maybe something is happening. I know we're doing renovation over here, and DCK talks about sometimes the workers aren't coming in, and if you push them too hard, they just go on another job, because there is a fair amount of construction going on right now. So maybe something good is going to happen. I'm hoping this time that we don't chase out the buildup, that we try to embrace it in a way that's good for Guam, so that our children aren't leaving to Las Vegas, so that our children aren't leaving to California, to San Diego, to try to get a job so that they can stay here. That's why I said in my testimony, instead of trying to think of tweaking this and tweaking that, I'd rather we much work, maybe in that same study group that we get together, that Economic Special Service or whatever it is, that thing you guys created, which I love to see convened, that we could talk about, not just the minimum wage issue, but also how do we create more opportunities for our young people and our middle-aged people and our elderly people in Guam? That's my response.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good panel. Thank you. Any follow-up questions?
Just one quick question, Mr. Flores. Phil, have you had the chance to review the census report?
You know what I did yesterday? Senator, knowing that I was coming today, and there was all those stats thrown out, I went through the BLS or whatever it was, report from 2010, all 600 pages of it. So then, I'm on the computer doing that, and then I get the email from the governor's office about that report coming out, and I'm going, oh, no, I'm not reading any more stats. But, no, I have a rep. But I don't know what that has to do with Mark Baldiga's business, I don't know with a $700,000 increase, and also, or situations like we're seeing here at the table, but also, as I said in my testimony, we're so fragile here. You know, we're just a little demitasse as far as an economy, and it's so easy for a shaking table to spill it and make it empty. And it's fortunately easy to fill up sometimes, like we had when the Japanese were spending money all over the world and things were going crazy in Guam economically. Again, we're only one day away from Typhoon Punxangwa. We were boarding up our offices in Saipan yesterday, by the way, fortunately it missed. But we're only one day for another epidemic, MERS, Middle East Respiratory Syndrome, coronavirus going on in Saudi Arabia right now, going on in Kuwait, going on in the UAE. What if that turns into a SARS and comes our way? There's unconfirmed cases in Malaysia and the Philippines already. What if that comes our way? You know, we had that terrible tsunami and the earthquake in Japan, they're all, they get more earthquakes than we do. And I'm really scared about that day when that guy's going to get back into that plane or blow up a bomb. It doesn't have to be the United States, it could be just about anywhere, because we know our tourists primarily come from Korea and they primarily come from Japan, and there is such a respectful culture that if something's going around the world or in one of their countries, they're not going to come to holidays in Guam anymore. That holiday thing just turns off like that for Guam, as we've seen so many times in the past. So, I haven't read the stats, I will read the stats, maybe we can discuss them at a future date and see what it really means. I'm anxious to see them, because I'm always anxious for good news, but just ask yourself, does it look like things are popping in Guam all the time? We're struggling. Al Israel's talking about the empty buildings in Guam. They're out there, you see them, you drive past them every day. You have a business, Tony, excuse me, Senator Addy, you have a business. We're in the death business. We're the only ones who say, oh, good, another person died. But the, nobody really has, sorry. You're in the business, you know, things are not growing hand over fist. It's tough. All businesses are tough out there. We have a number of businesses. Some of them are doing well, some of them aren't doing well. It's hard to make a dollar. It's hard to make a dollar during the good times. I don't think, I'll look at the stats, but I don't get too excited about stats. I get excited about what I see every day when I wake up.
The only reason why I wanted to, if we could discuss this offline, maybe in a couple of days after you've had a chance to review it, is because there's been some contention that an increase would result in a lot, this wholesale loss of jobs. And at least from that study, it looks like with 90% of the businesses supposedly having responded, if anybody can look at it and try to explain to me where the fallacy is in that, I'd appreciate--
I don't know. You can talk to this gentleman, you can talk to this gentleman. They'll tell you real life, they won't tell you statistics. You can talk to me, I'll tell you real life, but so we can have that conversation in a couple of days.
No, but it's stats that was taken from a survey of 90% of businesses on the island.
I'd be happy to look at it, I'll take a look at it, and we can discuss it.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Phil and Mark, I had to put you through this, because one of the media outlets today reported that everything here looks like a deal, and I want to put it on the record that there's no deal here for any tax breaks versus wage increases.
I don't want a tax break. I don't think the government of Guam can afford a tax break.
I think the only deal I'll make right now is we need a study. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I, again, thank you for your participation and for being here. Next, we have Jeff Jones, sir, representative from the Guam Bankers Association. We do have written testimony. Frank Guerrero from Latlan Tours. You're not, okay, but, okay. So we do have your written testimony and your position is-- If there's anybody else in the audience wishing to testify at this time, please sign in. If not, I guess, Mr. Jones, you're the last speaker for this panel. After your testimony and after any questions have been asked and answered, the committee will recess and come back at 5:30 for the third set of public hearings. So I recognize you at this time.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Chairman Rasmussen and committee members. I'm Jeff Jones. I'm here as a president of Triple J Enterprises, which has been doing business in Guam and contributing in this community for 30 years. Of course, our family has been here since World War II, when my uncle Ken came to Guam just after liberation as a young Navy Seabee to rebuild the island after the war. He fell in love with the island, its people, and decided to stay, and we continued rebuilding, and he continued to rebuild and investing in Guam until he passed away in 2008 at 90 years old. My father, Ken's brother Bob, came to Guam in the 1950s to visit his brother and went to high school here for a couple of years. That was back when GW was located in Mighty, in a Quonset hut. He returned later with his, with my mother and with my sister in 1960 to make Guam his home and our home. I was born here, my brother was born here, and all five of my children were born here. I say all this to communicate to you that Guam is our home for our family, and we care deeply about the community, not just the businesses in the community, but also the community itself. Our families go to school here, play sports here, worship here, work here, and are involved in many charitable causes benefiting the community at large. Last year alone, Triple J donated $100,000-- Last year alone, Triple J donated 100,000 to UOG, donated 30,000 to Guam Cancer Care. Our company and employees are currently raising funds for the Relay for Life and expect to surpass our contribution last year of 25,000. In addition, we significantly support many other organizations, such as American Red Cross, the GMH Volunteers, USO, Make-A-Wish, et cetera. In fact, just yesterday, we donated 100,000 miles to United for the Make-A-Wish kids, and so they could realize some of their wishes. In addition, we're strong supporters of youth soccer on Guam and other sports, Robbie Weber Soccer League, Guam National Football League, not to mention the many other organizations that come to us for donations for their tournaments, uniforms, and equipment needs. Again, I mentioned all of this not just to blow our horn, but to make a point that we are part of the community as a family, as individuals, and as a business. The community has been blessed by us, and we have been blessed by the community. So as I come here today to testify against the increase in the minimum wage, I'm not doing it as a greedy businessperson who just wants to make more money to put into my pocket. I'm doing it as both the businessperson and as the individual member of the community. The truth of the matter is that this minimum wage increase, if passed, will not have a significant effect on our businesses. Currently, less than 5% of our full-time employees are paid the minimum wage, and if they are with us for any significant time, as they learn skills and become more productive, they'll earn more. Our concern is really for the many low-skilled workers that this law will affect. Despite what some local economists say, Milton Friedman, the Nobel Prize-winning economist, made it very clear that he felt that minimum wages were the worst form of discrimination against the low-skilled workers. The reason for this is quite simple. In a competitive market like we have, anything that artificially raises the price of labor will reduce the demand for it. And the first to lose their jobs will be the least skilled. A 39% increase in the minimum wage even over three years is a significant artificial increase in the price of labor and will have a significant effect on the number of jobs available to the least skilled workers in our community. In our community, many of the least skilled workers are our young people and those who immigrate to Guam for the purpose of employment. If these people are not able to find employment, then we are just creating more of a burden on the rest of the community. In addition, many who do not have a stable family network to help support them may become desperate and turn to crime to support themselves. I believe we already are seeing this with the significant increases in robberies, thefts, and even home invasions, which we previously unheard of in our community. If the legislature sincerely wants to help the working poor earn more, I suggest that you look at topping up their incomes with public subsidies instead of private money. This would be a far more sensible way of addressing the matter and would alleviate poverty without the risk of losing jobs. Alternatively, if legislation increasing minimum wages is inevitable, I suggest that the matter be studied more thoroughly, as we've discussed already this afternoon, and more of the stakeholders be consulted as to the best way to proceed. Research suggests that smaller, more frequent increases, spread it over a longer period of time, allow the market to react more gradually and have less negative effect on workers and businesses. In closing, it is important for all of us to remember that minimum wages are not the real problem. The fundamental causes of low wages are the lack of education and skills, and this is where we should be focusing our efforts. Better education and better training will not only help our existing workforce have better and higher-paying jobs, but also our future workforce, and in turn, attract more investment and jobs to our community. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this important issue.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Yes. Okay. Thank you for your patience in being the last one to testify for this time. There are no questions of you. We'll recess till 5:30 and come back and hear from more individuals. Thank you very much.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign, Micronesian Affairs, Human Natural Resources, and Election Reform shall come to order. It's now 5:35, and this is a continuation of a hearing that we first announced five days in advance on April 15, 2014, and the second notice pursuant to the open government law was announced on April 18, 2014. And then we recessed our last hearing till 2 o'clock today, and then we're recessed after that panel was done, and now we're reconvening for our 5:30 hearing. It's now, again, it's now 5:35, and we're having this hearing on the matter of Bill 316-32, introduced by Vice Speaker Benjamin J.F. Cruz, and it's an act to repeal and reenact 3105, Chapter 3 of Title 22 of the Guam Quote Annotated, relative to responsibly raising the minimum wage. And I do have a sign-up sheet here, and at this time, we would like to invite the following members of the public who have signed up to testify to come forward. Renesha Pangolinan? Yeah, you've signed up first. Akripa? Help me with your name. Orchiro, right? Okay. Mary-Kate? Mary-Kate? Donnell?
You know, we have one more chair, but we have two more witnesses. Can you get another chair so we can just have it one panel? Nelson Silva? Yeah, please come forward. And Ms. Evita Perez. You didn't indicate that you would present oral testimony, but can you, okay, since you've signed up. Okay, let me begin by recognizing the vice chair of this committee, Senator Tomata. Senator Frank Uggan Jr., thank you for being here. Vice Speaker BJ Cruz. Senator Tommy Morrison. Senator Tony Ada, the minority leader. Senator Brent McCready. Senator Chris DeWigis. And Senator and Dr. Illyana Maschida. Thank you. Good evening. Okay, we'll start with Renesha, Ms. Pangolinan.
Half a day.
Half a day.
My name is Renesha Pangolinan. I am currently a senior at the University of Guam. Today, I am testifying as an aspiring social worker in support of Bill 316-32. In the time that I have been studying in the social work program at the University of Guam, I have learned many of the values that the profession is based on. One of the key values is social justice. Bill 316 will help provide a better environment for many of Guam's most vulnerable residents. Do I believe raising the minimum wage will eliminate poverty? No. That is unrealistic at this point. However, I do believe that this bill is one step closer in the right direction. I'd like to share a story of a family I know personally. This family of seven receives gorah and food stamps. The father is the sole provider of the family, making $7.25 an hour. His wife remained at home to care for the five children. He has been making this minimum wage for nearly 20 years now. His employer expressed that his wage will remain the same, and if he desired a raise, he could quit. Despite having the help of social welfare programs, they struggle. He couldn't risk quitting his job, and the wife could not leave her children alone to pursue school. They prioritized. The survival of their family became their priority. Today, I ask you, what do you want to prioritize? I would hope it would be family. By this, I mean our island family. The well-being of each and every individual, not just the select few. Sure, we cannot fix all of Guam's problems, at least not today, but we can make gradual steps toward a socially just society. I believe Bill 316 is one of those steps. The only way our island will fail is if we sit back and allow it to.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. How about the senators? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Chukis, and my name is Akripa Orchiro. Thank you very much for letting me speak today. I own a small business company which is maintenance and cleaning. I have nine employees, which is enough them are Chukis, two just men like me. The work we do doesn't really pay that much, but it pays enough for us to feed our families, and for that, we are very grateful for it. If the minimum wage is increased from $7.25 to $10-plus, I would really be forced to let go of my guys, the men that work for me, as of now. And it will also be affecting the number of jobs that we have, we can handle. So, in that case, it will also hurt me and my business. I am very proud of the jobs, the small business that I have now. My guys work very hard, just like me, and they also learn and gaining some experience of maintenance. So in the future, if anything happens to my business, they can go on, move on, and find another job. So now, they are very learning something from my small business. And if anything about the increase for the minimum wage, of course, I'm really going to be forced to let them go, which is I cannot be able to pay them that much. So for now, my business is not really able to survive the drastic increase in pay. And I know that me and my guys would rather have steady pay of $7.25 an hour, better than risk our jobs and the small business that I have now. Please reconsider this bill and give those of who are just trying to make an unassuming in our own business, a chance to make it. Thank you, senators. Thank you.
Thank you also. Can you please make sure we have, is that your testimony? We can make copies for the members, but also for the committee report. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Ms. Mary-Kate Donnell?
Good evening, Chairman, committee members. I'm ready to testify in full support of Bill Number 316-32. My name is Mary-Kate Donnell, and I'm a proud resident of Guam. I'm 25 years old and a recent graduate of the University of Guam. I have no children. I rent a one-bedroom apartment and own a used car. I work in the nonprofit sector, and I'm a soldier in the Guam Army National Guard. I have much to be grateful for, but I'm also among many who live paycheck to paycheck. I support this bill to increase the minimum wage, because I have personally struggled with living off of just one paycheck. Before I moved to Guam two years ago, I was making over $12 an hour 40 hours a week without any college degree. Although I was not born and raised on Guam, I'm Tramoral by blood. I returned to Guam in hopes of finishing my college education, which I did by working multiple jobs. After I graduated my bachelor's degree in the spring of 2012, I was still struggling to pay all of my bills. I couldn't even find a decent full-time job, although my part-time jobs and internships were allowing me to live an independent life. I've seen movie previews and ads in the paper encouraging our people to stay on island to attend college, yet how can we fully support this with our young people struggling to make a living? With hopes of having more job opportunities and higher pay, I decided to achieve my master's degree and simultaneously join the Guam Army National Guard. Monthly, I pay rent, the minimum on my loan, and a list of bills, all to maintain the small living I have. I'm not saying I don't appreciate the importance of hard work, but it's difficult to be my age and live a life unassisted by parents or by the government. Receiving my job and drill pay is hardly enough for me. I can't imagine the struggles of someone who has a spouse and children to support and a mortgage to pay for. I've done my own research and heard from matter experts on this issue, and I stand by my decision that the good in increasing the minimum wage outweighs the risk. Our economy did not crash when wages were increased in 2007 or the years following. By increasing the minimum wage in stages, we continue to put the people of Guam first. If this is the Guam I've come to know and love that stands by creating a more beautiful and better island, the minimum wage will be increased. Let's take a step forward in bettering our economy and making the possibility of working one job and still having a good quality of life a reality. Thank you.
Thank you also, Ms. Donnell. Just want to make sure we get a copy of your testimony so we can be on the committee report.
Good evening, Chairman Respecho and committee members. I'm a specialist leader of the Guam Army National Guard and have been serving our great island and nation for more than five years. I and many others like me have done what we can to serve our country, only to struggle monetarily in our strained economy, working more than one job to cover expenses. Is this the American dream that my Filipino parents wanted for their children? In a striving economy, the cost of living should obviously be low and manageable for all, but it is evident that our economy is far from perfect. I've lived on Guam my whole life, and like many others, like many of my friends earned an expensive degree. Because of this and the growing number of Guam graduates, many people at my educational level have to essentially fight for available job opportunities to cover compounding expenses. Before that preferred job comes by, one would have no choice but to start at the bottom, and that would mean applying for minimum wage jobs. I can barely count the amount of my friends who have graduated from a university only to work two jobs to cover their liabilities. Years go by, and they are still doing the same thing, mainly because opportunities fly by for those who are too busy with bills and cannot risk missing a day at work for a simple job interview. I also have other friends who are not as fortunate to have these means to get a higher form of education and have no choice but to work at low-income jobs. These are the friends who I worry about the most. I see them working multiple jobs and stressing over unpaid debts. Most of them have a family of their own, and in most cases, welfare is not enough to survive in this economy, especially when they are trying to get out of welfare. How many more families have to suffer before something can be done? The obvious truth is that the lack of money impedes a person from achieving their personal goals. It is harder to achieve anything when there are obstacles in the way. All we want is to lessen the obstacles little by little to improve the success rate of the average American or Comenian. Give our people a chance to live, and thank you for allowing us to speak today.
Oh, thank you. I guess my mic wasn't on, but I wanted to make sure that for the record, the committee recognizes the two of you in particular and thanks the two of you for your service to our country. Yeah, thank you. And Ms. Perez, thank you.
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Evita Rubano Perez, and I am the chapter manager for NASW Guam Chapter. I am a psychiatric social worker with Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, and I am also a licensed individual marriage and family therapist on Guam. I am here on behalf of the board and our President Amy Sue Santos. On behalf of the members of the Guam Chapter of the National Association of Social Workers, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to the issue of increasing the minimum wage on Guam. The Guam Chapter of NASW has been in existence for over 30 years. We first started with the Guam Association of Social Workers, which was founded in 1978, and in 1999, it was transformed into the Guam Chapter, the NASW, which is the largest professional social organization in the United States with about 160,000 members. I shall briefly outline the context, rationale, and specific policy of our organization on the issue of minimum wage. In our daily work with individuals, families, and communities, we social workers encounter firsthand the devastating costs and consequences of poverty and economic uncertainty. We clearly see how the economic factors of these living conditions contribute to the incidence of family violence, substance abuse, crime, mental illness, and the diminished capacity for healthy family and community functioning. The effectiveness of our social services, such as counseling, therapy, casework, and educational support, are seriously compromised when provided in the context of economic insecurity. It is this intimate knowledge of these people living in poverty which gives us a special responsibility to speak out to this issue and advocate for public policies that promote economic justice and social well-being of all members of our communities in Guam. We strongly support the enactment of We strongly support the enactment of Bill 316-32 into public law. America's economy of the past few decades is a tale of increasingly skewed wealth and income. The new economy generates extraordinary riches for the few, but creates declining wages, rising debts, and the risk of deep and persistent poverty for many. The wealth of our nation is concentrating more and more at the very top of the economic ladder. Workers are dividing a shrinking share of the economic pie. More and more people work at poverty-level wages. The term "working poor" has unfortunately become an accepted term in public service. As socioeconomic data confirms, earnings of minimum-wage workers decades ago, when adjusted for the inflation, were much higher than they are now. Poor people nationwide and in Guam are poorer now than they were decades ago. There are many people in Guam, nobody knows the exact number, who have been working on minimum wage for more than ten, sometimes even fifteen years. They have worked hard, they have worked well, and persistently year after year. But their income still does not allow them to buy health insurance, to rent, to purchase adequate housing, or to provide home environments conducive for the proper education of their children. When their family members get sick, they can't seek medical treatment when the outstanding bills create too much stress and problems. They leave and move on to the next inadequate place of residence, and then they start all over again. And then they sooner or later become modern nomads. We social workers witness every day how living conditions of working poor people become breeding grounds for all sorts of social ills, such as substance abuse, family violence, and other crimes. It is our view that the adjustment of the minimum wage to the economic realities of Guam is long overdue. This is why we social workers in Guam strongly affirm the national policy of NASW, which is to adjust the lowest income levels of workers to meet or exceed the federal and local poverty guidelines for anyone who works full-time. It is also the explicit policy of NASW to support a minimum wage that is indexed to cost of living expenses and their increases, and that is a living wage. Hence, we strongly support the minimum wage bill 316-32. Respectfully submitted, Amy Sue Santos, President, NASW. Thank you.
Thank you also for your, your testimony. Senator Morrison?
Well, I thank the panel for your, your testimony. I just wanna ask Mr. Richo, I thank you for your, your testimony and your, I know you stated you're proud of your business, and how long you been in business?
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. I've been running my business for going on seven years right now, Senator.
Oh, great.
Thank you, sir.
Did you, you start off with nine employees, or in your first year, did you start off with nine, or you worked your way up to nine?
That's a very good question, sir. I started, just me and my family, which is me and my wife and my older daughter. And as like, three years later, then I, I get the nine employee under me now.
Okay, so you, have you analyzed the impact if this was to happen? The ten dollars, would it, that you might have to let go some employees?
Yes, sir. I have to. I have to force to let go like two or three of my guys.
Okay. I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, there are no questions from the senators. I can thank you for your participation tonight, and your comments will definitely be part of the committee report and the record. Thank you. Next up, we have Jaclyn Balbin, Ramona Jones, to provide oral testimony. And Mr. Juan Carlos Benitez, you indicated your position on the bill, and that would also be part of the record, but you won't be testifying. Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Balbin?
Just got back to island. Benny Calley had to move because of recession, but I heard about this, and I wanted to come down and say a few words. I support Bill 316 to raise the minimum wage. Early this month, I had read the newspaper about raising the minimum wage and all the comments that had been going on about this. Someone said that a wise thing to do is to gather data and conduct a survey to see who Guam's minimum wage earners are. Another statement was that Guam has six thousand five hundred and fourteen Guam families living in poverty, with two thousand eight hundred seventy-four of those sole income earners are women like me. Now, today I read that nearly sixty percent of GBB business members are likely to cut jobs if minimum wage increases. In response of a recent surveys, they would be forced to decrease hours and reduce benefits. Well, I left in 2000 because all I heard was no raises, no bonuses, no hours, positions will be eliminated. I worked in the hospitality industry in the late nineties, so I was a minimum wage earner back then. I've come back to the island. My family has been working for 2000 in these type of industries, and they are hearing the same exact words that I heard in the nineties. Our island has experienced global recessions, military promises and delays, natural disasters, raising cost of living, food, utilities, gas, et cetera. So basically, the years passed, living in the present, and of course, probably the future to come. We will always, always have minimum wage earners. It's not gonna go away. All our companies in here, they need those entry-level positions. Who are they gonna look for? Us. How are you gonna run your business? What will you do without housekeeping, janitorial, guest services, waitstaff, kitchen staff, cashiers, stockers, stockers, people who are in these positions? The titles are endless. We are literally the backbone of your companies. We work any day of the week. We have to have a flexible schedule. We don't have Monday through Friday, sometimes twenty-four-seven on your, on your business. We do overtime when you ask us. We miss holidays, family events. We complete your business. Us, the minimum wage worker. So many of us have valid reasons to stay in a position that plenty people say is entry-level. I worked for a global corporation for seven years as inventory clerk. People keep telling me, move up to management. Why are you an entry-level? Why, I would say, I enjoyed my position. I came to work. I took pride in my job. I did my duties. I worked hard. I built an outstanding team. We were all entry-level. And it showed. We didn't have education. Our store that we worked at became a super center of the year. We became a training store. A majority of us that started were entry-levels. I worked for Walmart. So why do I have to move up from entry-level to make a decent wage? My investment in the company has aged me. So if I get laid off, my mature years of working hinders my employment. I'm over-experienced in some positions and unskilled for others. So if I finally land a job, it's at minimum wage. I'm underemployed at my age. Young people go to school, trying to make ends meet, stay with mom and dad, relatives, wherever it may be. But maybe if the minimum wage is ten-ten eventually, they don't have to choose. Maybe they can still go to school and still have a job, part-time, to make it to what they truly wanna do. Others have to take care of a sick family member. We all know this on the island. We have an elder. Some take care of your grandkids, your nieces and nephews, whatever it may be. Minimum wage raising, maybe they can do both, work part-time and take care of the ones that they love. So there are many valid reasons to stay at entry-level's job and have a decent life and deserve a decent wage, so. And also, there are lots of tax breaks, I'm sure, these small businesses. We can help. We, the people, need to speak up. You work, you're working for us. There's got to be ways to help. Not the big companies, the small people like the gentleman that came here today. There has to be a way to help him. Don't tell me all the tax breaks only go to the big companies. There has to be ways. And we need to surprise a company that will, maybe a division that can help, help this man, help the people with their small businesses, to let them, teach them, give them knowledge, give them a chance to know what's out there for them, so they won't suffer. Because I know the big companies aren't gonna suffer as much. And also, my big question is why are minimum wage earners, earners, I always see this, they're always called the poor, the undereducated, the low-skilled, and the unemployed. Personally, I think we are the hard-working, the loyal, the dedicated, and most times, the underpaid. So please pass this bill, and thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you for your testimony also. Ms. Jones?
Hello Chairman, Senators. Thank you for your time. My, my testimony, I know that it went really long the other night, and I, and I see the, the, the very tough choice that you have ahead of you. And to me, one of the issues that I would like to speak to is not just whether or not the minimum wage should increase once, but having it compounded three times. I think that we've had a minimum wage increase recently, and since that time, we had Senator Lillian Guerrero, who's the chairman of a bank and also the chairman of the Women's Chamber, come and speak. And she brought up some of the factors that have eroded the purchasing power of people with minimum wage. And she mentioned that food had gone up thirty-two percent, housing had gone up twenty-four percent, power up forty-two percent. And basically, I think to put that in a nutshell, it's inflation. So you have competing concepts going on. One, the salary that a person makes and the cost that they have to live. And when inflation is increasing at this rate, it's almost impossible for a salary to keep up with that rate of inflation so that a family can live. And I understand that you would want to have three steps that hopefully bring that family up to a point where they have a sustainable lifestyle, where they can provide for their family, send them to school, feed them, have, you know, some healthcare. These are things that I think all make sense. But we don't have any break between the three increases to measure what's happening to inflation, what's happening to GDP, what's happening to employment. So I'm concerned that if a tipping point is reached, maybe after this next minimum wage increase, or maybe after the second minimum wage increase, there's no, there's no break. It's just mandated, and it's going to happen no matter what's actually happening in the economy. And I think politically speaking, repealing a minimum wage is going to be incredibly difficult. I think taking it one step at a time is a really prudent and wise gesture for the, for the legislature to make. The other thing that I'm concerned about is it's not tied with the federal minimum wage. And people can guess that the federal government is going to raise the minimum wage. They may, and they may not. And if they do, we don't know by how much. And if we do, if they do, we don't know when. And in the meantime, families that are the most in need of help, who get SNAP, WIC, CHIP, you know, these different programs that are all based on federal programs and federal guidelines of, of wage earning, will not be tied with what's happening here on Guam. And so there might be people who inadvertently graduate out of these programs, and they need these programs because we have a mandated wage that's above the federal minimum wage. I, I just, I think that sometimes there's a stigma associated with these social programs that are needed, and there should be no stigma. We as a society say that these are things that we would, that we say are necessary. And so for us to create a situation that on top of the stigma of social programs, that on top of it, we're gonna make it extra difficult for, for our local folks to qualify for that, I think that we are creating a situation of unintended consequences, perhaps by having a federal minimum wage at one level and a local, a local minimum wage in another. So those are basically my two points, is one, that I, I'm concerned about three, three raises, one right after the other, without a break, to see how it impacts our economy. And then two, how will this impact social programs when we're not tied to the, the federal level? And I'd like to thank you for your time and letting me express my opinion.
Thank you also for your testimony and your presentation and your participation tonight. Any senators wishing to ask any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, wait, Senator Uggun?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I certainly appreciate your concern with regards to three consecutive raises and applying them in the timeframe that the proposal provides. But looking at tying it with the federal minimum wage and some of the social programs, I think that when I look at social programs, I think of it in totality in terms of it being a transitional program. And really, as if, should this legislation pass, the reality is, is that if it's gonna restrict some of these individuals from continuing to receive benefits, I'm hoping that there's, there's incentive enough so that in fact, they not only transition out of the social program to some extent, but it, it really helps them in terms of taking advantage of economic opportunities out there. And I say that with all sincerity because should things materialize over the course of the next year, year and a half with regards to the military relocation, with regards to the Asian economy and the continued growth of our tourism industry, I would like to see much more of our people take advantage of those opportunities. You know, I mean, we just had an individual who established a business two years ago, and we certainly hope that his concerns are taken into consideration. But in the same token, I think that we also need to recognize that as these small businesses develop, there are incentives provided by their government so that they can try to make it through and continue to grow over time. I mean, when I talk about the Dave Santes tax relief, when I talk about some of the other provisions that are provided and benefits that are provided by, by the community of Guam through their government, I'm certainly hopeful that we can, we can work in terms of encouraging individuals to transition out and make sure that they, they eventually, really more or less, make it on their own and they'll be able to be sustaining. I mean, just to hear the story of, of someone who was able to acquire her degree at the University of Guam, is continuing to pursue her masters and is barely making ends meet, at least that's my understanding. It certainly speaks of being able to try to, to add some additional financial incentives and, and certainly just taking into consideration your concern with regards to tying it to minimum wage and tying it to social program. And I've always looked at that as transitional in nature. So I'm hoping that this would be, would not only provide them with a means of moving away, shying away from social programs, but also becoming a lot more independent in terms of providing for themselves and providing for the families. And, you know, we, we know that we've discussed economics component, the economic components that we've heard from economists in terms of this particular issue. But I appreciate some of the concerns. And when you talk about the timing, this is the first time that I've heard a comment coming from an individual providing testimony, aside from this afternoon. I don't know if it was brought up during the course of this afternoon's public hearing, but just hearing that, that at least you're sharing your concern in terms of the timing, consecutive timing, and then tying it with the minimum wage. But, but like I said, I mean, I, I just look at the social programs as transitional in nature, and I certainly hope that our people also look at it that way. And this may be an opportunity for them to, to further become independent and self-sustaining. But thank you for your comments, ladies.
If I could just say one thing, I, ideally, we want our social programs to be transitional because it means that the person has graduated and they have become, they've reached another rung in the level of economic stability. So that's really the reason why we wanna see people out of the program is because they've, they've reached a better situation. So I think we all agree on that. The, the issue that I raise is, right now, for a family of four, the poverty level is set at around twenty-three thousand dollars a year, approximately. It varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. If you look at the minimum wage now, that means that you'll have one wage earner and potentially a second one who potentially a second one who works part-time. If both of them work full-time, which most families, if they, if they are in this level, a lot of times you have two, two working parents, then they have graduated out of some of the assistance. Now, if you raise the wage here on Guam, but the federal minimum wage does not change, then the poverty guideline still stays the same, all right? But then what happens is now this family on Guam, who is now potentially making eight or nine dollars, instead of having one full-time and one half-time, they might have to choose between, maybe you don't work, because the food stamps are really important, the, the benefit of the food stamps and the chip, it's not just one program, it's multiple. And I remember there was this woman who, I came to work and there was this binder right outside my office, and there were these papers that were kind of around the binder, and I said, what, you know, what is this? And I, I went and I looked and there was like birth certificates, there were report cards, there were all these different, really important vital statistic papers. And this woman had put them in this binder, very organized, and I said, wow, this is somebody's life. Like, somebody who, what, what happened here? So picked it up, we started looking at it, tried to find the person who it was, and she is a working mother who had her car stolen. She took care of two children and she had to have all these papers, just one right after the other, just in order to have her caseworker help her with all of these things. And so that person, we don't want to make their life harder on Guam so that they have to then consider moving to California or Hawaii because all of a sudden, they don't qualify for these programs. So my point is not that we don't want them to graduate. My point is, if it's possible to allow for the federal minimum wage and the increases that we expect to happen to come into play on Guam, we have to abide by that rule. So if we just let that take care of it, then we will see the minimum wage increase. Please be cautious not to have legislation that could potentially raise Guam's minimum wage beyond the federal minimum wage, because I think the consequences could be significant for families, and we won't know it necessarily just on the first one, but on the second and the third. So if there's a way to break it up, if you can amend it, if there's a way to reintroduce something, that's, that's what I'm here to, to ask for. Can we, can we look at that?
Okay, Senators, any question or? Okay, there are no other questions and there are no other individuals who signed up tonight. You know, I just want to recap and thank everybody for participating in this public hearing. Ms. Jones, you are right, we started on April 23rd from eight PM to twelve-thirty in the morning, and we were here two o'clock and then we were, we came back at five-thirty this evening. But, you know, this is a very important issue and one that we have to get all sectors of the community to participate in and hence the reasons why we had these three hearings. The sponsor of the bill, Vice Speaker Cruz, has asked that we keep the, the record open for ten days to provide additional time for more testimony to be submitted. And although we've been having these hearings, we still get written testimony via email or even comments posted on Facebook to let us know what those concerns are from the different perspectives. And so, so the, the committee will leave the record open for ten days to give more people enough time to gather their thoughts and put their thoughts in writing and submit that to us. At the same time, we'll do the best we can to continue to air these public hearings on the legislative channel. So for those who can't come down to testify, they can follow the discussion since the introduction of the bill and since the first hearing that we had on April 23rd. So, Mr. Vice Speaker, do you have any closing comments? If there are no closing comments, again, thank you all for your participation and I certainly appreciate the manner in which this discussion was presented so that we focus on, on the issue and no other issue other than the bill 316 that purports to raise the minimum wage in that kind of fashion. And so, having no other comments from any of our colleagues here or from the members of the public, no one in the audience wishing to testify any further, if not, we're adjourned on the matter of Bill 316, but the record will remain open for ten days, even up until the point we're in session, because I imagine it just, you just can't say it's the tenth day and we're going to receive no more testimony. The legislature is an open process where we would receive testimony up until the very time senators have to vote on the bill. And even, there's been instances where even after the bill's passed, people have asked that their written testimony after the fact also be included in the committee report, so we've made supplements to the committee reports just so that their concerns can be registered. So thank you, colleagues, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker, for bringing this issue forward and allowing us to, to discuss it in this kind of fashion. So thank you, we're adjourned.